You got five minutes, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, funny.
Good to get.
I didn't know. It's not late. What did I do?
At least you're one of the tactics out this time.
Yeah. Technical problems.
(inaudible)
Thursday, September 11th, 2025. Uh, Mr. Johnson, I will tell you, Mr. Holbrook did notify me that he would not be present tonight. So if you will, take a roll call.
Mr. M. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Pedrosian?
Here.
Mr. S. Hill?
Here.
Dr. Hubach?
Here.
Mrs. Purvis?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
It's moved.
We're gonna have a motion by Mr. Daniels to have a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Hubach. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. You will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you will please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. Uh, we will go to staff reports. Two dot O one superintendent's report, Mr. DePere.
Good evening. I want to start with a somber recognition of the events that forever have left 11th of September as a horrific mark in our minds and embedded in our nation's history. Let us not forget the 2,977 individuals who lost their lives at the hands of 19 terrorists with attacks using three American Airlines flights with three crashes into the World Trade Center and Pentagon and the crashes United Airlines flight 93 in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Um, let us never forget and never accept their loss. SOL rankings are in it. I am proud to say that VCPS has moved up the rankings from 36 to 31 for the 24-25 SOL academic performance scores. Also, Manita Elementary was also recognized as a top 20 school with improvements on pass rate and percentile rank. Overall, VCPS was identified as one of 13 divisions in Virginia that produced the highest state ranking in SOLO pass rates from 2006 to 2025. Congratulations to all the VCPS faculty and staff and their hard work and dedication to this endeavor, and a huge thank you to the student body for their diligence and academic engagement. Tonight, the executive team will make the presentation requested by the VCPS School Board in April, in an April meeting to redistrict the elementaries of Forest Zone. The presentation will return to the original proposal from the May 8th, 2025 School Board meeting that addressed boundary changes to involve Forest Elementary, Thomas Jefferson Elementary, Otter River Elementary, New London Academy, and Boonsborough Elementary. We will again share the current capacity concerns that show Forest Elementary at a present capacity of 98%. The current and future projections brought before this board need to be addressed and can be addressed as an all-inclusive consideration as presented or on a school-by-school basis. Either decision should address the need to initiate capacity relief to Forest Elementary in the 25-26 school year. Also tonight, you will hear a revision, revised presentation of our current strategic framework, originally developed in the 22-23 school year. Tonight's version will include an addition of goal five, efficient and effective use of resources. In the coming months, I will return to the campuses of VCPS with the reply conversations that started with 53 SWAT discussions that occurred. The process of this discussion will be to further discuss the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats that people brought up forward and to make update application where appropriate within the revised strategic framework. Once we have updated our goals with board approval, we will begin to report pieces of the strategic plan to the school board meetings on a monthly basis. On Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, the executive team will reconvene the superintendent's Student School Advisory Board, inviting selected juniors and seniors from Liberty High School, Stanton River High School, and Jefferson Forest for discussion. The topic of the initial meeting will, will be going back to the student advisory's concern from last year regarding vaping on their respective campuses. Um, this last part of my presentation is gonna be more of an observation on my part. I'm, I've been here now my 14th month, and there is something that has concerned me over time, and so I want to address that publicly. During the last year, I've noticed an alarming communication, in particular, a chain of command protocol trend, that I am coming to know as acceptable, not only, but likely for many years prior to my tenure. Not only have I heard about it, but I have now experienced it, and what troubles me most is that it seems to be acceptable and tolerated by most levels of the stakeholders. These stakeholders groups include parents, teachers, staff, extracurricular leaders and coaches, mid-level administrators, principals, central office personnel, and executive team members and school board members. In 2022, the Gallup poll conducted a study that looked at the erosion of confidence toward US institutions, which is presently at an all-time low. Confidence in public school education has taken that hit as well with a 28% confidence rating nationally and a 4% declining, decline in confidence since 2020. While instituting, while institutional decline shows up in about 15 different national institutions, I do not believe that this should be an assumption for Bedford County public schools and also believe that we can turn this perception with a request for collaboration and civility. Let's start this conversation with a discover of, discussion of what a proper chain of command is. As noted prior, the chain of command is in, in education community runs from, from the bottom up currently. Parents, teachers, staff, extracurricular leaders and coaches, mid-level administrators, principals, central office, executive team, and school board members should, in all practicality, allow the chain of command to occur, in which case it does not always happen. The act alone is one of the most detrimental moves that we can make towards this, to substantiate and support our leadership model. Anything out of this order shows disregard for leadership and frankly mirrors, if Dad doesn't give me the answer I want, then surely Mom will, so let's just bypass Dad altogether. Dislike, dislike for policies, procedures, and decisions rendered at the school or divisional level should, should be questioned for accuracy and for respectful, respectful diplomacy and should, should not be a gotcha moment taken out of context or displayed on social media. There will be moments that the answer no is an appropriate response from a stakeholder above your status on the chain of command, and we need to spend more time understanding the decision and thus more time accepting why some answers are more beneficial for the good of the whole, even when they are contrary to what we request. Opposition to school-based decisions, decision policy and or regulations can be challenged. It's acceptable. If you have concerns that warrant a fresh look for the next step of the chain of command, then by all means pursue the correct protocol and request a second opinion. That request should be brought in an orderly and respectful fashion. Decisions are not to be whimsical and should not be consider, and should be considerate of how they will affect students, schools, and stakeholders. In my career, over time, I have come up with three non-negotiables. Number one, in all chain of command scenarios, the concerns flow up. Take your initial concern to the needy person involved in your inquiry and move to the next level when you cannot get the answer that you think you deserve or the best addresses your individual concern. It is appropriate to ask any person with a concern to consider staying, staying in the chain of command. Not only is it appropriate, but it is also the right thing to do. Non-negotiable number two, diplomacy. As previously addressed, properly addressing concerns should always travel up through the chain of command, and yet most often angst comes down the chain of command when it's done inappropriately. As an example, a teacher who avoids their principal to address their concern above that principal should be redirected back to their principal. Concerns taken through the proper chain of command should always include respectful diplomacy. Always address your concerns in a correct order of chain of command with respect and expect, respect in return. The third and final, again, is the situation of given no answer. When you are given the answer no, it, it, it can be questioned, but it cannot be defied. If you have a concern that you still feel is not heard or addressed, take it to the next position on the chain of command respectfully, and by all means, if you don't like the answer you receive, taking it to social media does not solve the problem. It only shows your lack of cooperation. I trust that you will all understand the intent behind my heart in this, um, discussion. Um, I think we can do better on a public level, and I think each stakeholder can do better, uh, including my own office. So I want to thank the stakeholders for understanding the intent of my request, and I know that VCPS will always put the best interest of our students, social, emotional, and academic growth first. Thank you in advance for your cooperation with tonight's information and request. This concludes my report.
Great. Two dot O two preliminary SOL scores, Dr. Trossler.
Uh, good evening. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting preliminary data from SOL tests that were given in the spring of 2025. So there's always gonna be areas where improvement is needed. I want to echo what Mr. DePere said, there is a lot to celebrate this year. Our students improved in many areas, and in some cases, they showed drastic growth. Overall, the trend in Bedford County is that we're continuing to move in the right direction. Our standing compared to surrounding divisions is strong, and we are getting better every year. So the chart displays overall pass rates. This chart's not nearly as nice as the one that he put together, so, but it does kind of show the, the trends since 2012. Um, I did want to highlight that when we look at our rankings, as 31st in the state, that's compared to 131 other divisions in Virginia. Uh, and the other thing that I think is really exciting is we're one of the 13 divisions in the state that has achieved our highest ranking since 2006. Uh, and additionally, our three-year average for Bedford County is actually higher than any other three-year period on record. So as I said, we have a lot to celebrate. This chart shows pass rates by core subject over the past five years compared to the state. In 25, reading and science were both ranked 26. Reading has remained fairly consistent since 2021, while science has made drastic improvements since then, actually improving by 33 points. Writing was ranked 37 and has remained consistent since 21, and history was ranked 43rd, uh, but they've also shown great improvements since being ranked 76 in 2022. All subjects improved their standing from last year except math, which is ranked 41st, but keep in mind that math was the highest-ranked subject in Bedford County in '24, and they have shown steady improvement since 2021. Uh, as Mr. DePere said, we, I did want to highlight Manita. They are one of the top 20 schools in the state that demonstrated the largest state rank improvements for SOL pass rates and percentile rankings. Also, Manita and Boonsborough were two of the top 10 schools that improved pass rates for students with disability with SOL pass rates and percentile rankings. So this is for the CIP consortium, so of 72 schools, school divisions, uh, Manita and Boonsborough were in the top 10 improving their students with disabilities. So I commend both of those schools especially. The next few charts will show pass rates by test for Bedford County students. Please note that these scores represent raw pass rates. Raw pass rates represent pass and fail rates of tests with no adjustments for growth. Scores that are in parentheses represent pass rates of students in Virginia that were tested in the same subject. Final accreditation data is not available at this time. They probably will look a little different because accreditation does calculate growth and understand that our team's basis support on raw scores, since they give us an accurate reflection of where students are based on grade level standards. So looking at English Language Arts by test, over the past three years, our overall English pass rates have risen steadily from 75 to 79. These gains consistently place us at or above the state average across grade levels. The success is especially evident in our middle schools. Grade seven and eight reading scores have shown remarkable improvement, with both increasing to over 80%. Our high school students also continue to excel with consistently high pass rates, both on the EOC reading and writing exams. Looking at math, this chart shows student performance on the math SOL test over the past four years. Uh, the pass, the overall pass rate has shown improvement increasing from 72 to 76 and outperforming the state average every year. Math scores in grades three through six have also improved and outperformed state averages since 2021. We've seen exceptional growth in our upper-grade math scores. Uh, for example, grade eight math, the pass rate has gone from 57 to 79 in just three years, moving from being at the state average to being significantly above it. Our students' performance on the algebra test has generally been consistent and in line with the state average, even though they did take a step back last year. And while our overall pass rate showed a slight dip from 77 to 76%, looking at the full picture, Bedford County continued to show growth in key areas like grade five, which jumped from 74 to 80, and gains in grade eight moving from 74 to 79. But at the same time, we'll closely watch the decreases we saw in grade four, grade six, and Algebra I to understand and address those specific needs. Looking at science, looking at science, this chart shows the progress we've made in science, and our overall scores are on a very, very strong upward trajectory. They've climbed steadily from 65 in 2022 to 77% in the current school year. So we're really proud of these results from the recent course sequence changes. The 24-25 school year marks the first time all of our eighth graders took the grade eight science test. Their performance has been a success with a 77% pass rate. This achievement combined with an impressive jump in grade five science to 79% and a strong finish in biology, shows science instruction has been solid over the past few years. The chart on the screen shows our division's performance in history SOL test. This data indicates, again, consistent increase in our overall history pass rate, going from 64 to 70% over the past three years. In each of these years, our overall pass rate has exceeded the state average. Now note the grayed-out areas on the chart for World History I indicate a change in testing sequence. World History I has now been moved to the high school, and World Geography was moved to the eighth grade. Virginia's study pass rates have shown strong performance, consistently exceeding state averages, and civics and economics scores have risen to align with or exceed the state average. In the two years of available data, the World Geography pass rate has also demonstrated improvement, increasing from 73 to 78. So the next few slides will show raw SOL pass rates for each assessment, broken down by zone and by school. For reading, the state target was 75% pass rate, and the other subjects were 70%. And again, I just want to emphasize, growth might change these scores, and some of our lower-performing schools will have a bigger pool of growth to choose from, so their scores will probably see the most significant changes. So starting with elementary reading in the Forest Zone. At Boonsborough, in 22-23, score started at 81%. It dipped slightly to 79%, and then they rose to 84%, recovering after that small decline. Forest Elementary has consistently demonstrated strong performance, beginning at 88%, climbing to 90, and then holding steady with the solid 86% last year. New London Academy has a similar pattern of stability, going from 86 to 88 before a small drop to 84 this past year. And then Otter River has shown positive growth, increasing steadily from 80 to 83% and then to 86% over three years. Finally, Thomas Jefferson had, has remained steady, holding between 84 and 86% throughout this time period. So these results reflect stability across the Forest Zone, but there's some schools showing strong upward momentum. Even where we see some minor dips, the broad picture is one of consistency and progress in maintaining solid achievement levels. Looking at the Liberty Zone, Bedford Elementary, the scores just haven't moved as much as we'd like. They've went from 65 to 63 in both of the last two years. Big Island traditionally has strong scores, starting at 84% two years ago. They held steady at 82%, and then there was a decline this past year to 71%. And then at Manitas, or excuse me, at Montville, scores have been consistent, starting at 64%, rising slightly to 66, and then returning back to 64. So taken together, the Liberty Zone schools show stability in those two schools and a more concerning decline at one school. And so the data shows us that while pockets of strength exist, additional division and school-based support is gonna be needed to have more consistent gains across this zone. Going to the Stanton River Zone at Goodview, pass rates rose significantly from 68 to 77% before leveling out at 75 last year. Huddleston has declined in small increments, starting at 69, dropping to 68, and then down again to 66 this past year. And as I've already shared at Manita, we've seen a very positive trend. The last two years' scores have held steady at 75 and 74 before climbing to 84% last year. This is the highest in the zone, showing strong improvement and sustained momentum. Finally, Stewartsville has seen some declines, moving from 72 to 71% and then dropping further to 67. So overall, we do have some bright spots in the Stanton River Zone, showing some significant growth, particularly at Manita and Goodview, but there are schools like Huddleston and Stewartsville where the performance has declined, and they're gonna receive closer attention uh, from the school division support team. Looking at the Forest Zone for math now, so we're going back to the Forest Zone, looking at math pass rate, pass rates. Starting in Boonsborough, we see a strong performance in the 22-23 school year, um, with an 85% pass rate. They jumped to 92% and then returned back to 85% last year. Forest Elementary has been consistent, maintaining pass rates between 87 and 88% across all three years. New London has shown high achievement, going from 89 to 90, dipping slightly to 85% last year. Otter River showed a positive upward trend, starting at 82, increasing to 83, and then making a significant leap to 90, uh, last year. And then finally, Thomas Jefferson, they've maintained high performance throughout with scores of 89, 90, and 90%. This consistency at the top of the scale is notable and shows a strong instructional foundation. So while most schools in the Forest Zone are performing above the state average, the data reveals both areas of sustained success, but there are also some opportunities for improvement which we'll be looking at. In the Liberty Zone, Bedford Elementary has consistently scored in the low 60s with a slight uptick in the 23-24 to 66%, followed by a drop to 61% last year. Big Island again began strong with an 86% pass rate, but has since declined to 78 and then to 68% pass rate. Montville showed moderate performance in the first two years, 75 to 78%, but they dropped to 67% last year. So overall, the Liberty Zone unfortunately is trending downward in math, so we are focusing a lot of support in math instruction with targeted support at Bedford Elementary, and then really looking deeper at the factors contributing to some of the declining scores at Big Island and Montville. So moving to the Stanton River Zone, Goodview improved significantly from 71 to 83% before dipping to 75 last year. Still 70 being the benchmark, that's still solid for Goodview. Huddleston has steadily improved from 67 to 64, then they made a jump to 74%. Again, Manita has shown consistent growth from 75 to 76, and then all the way up to 84% last year. And Stewartsville is one that has declined from 75 to 68 over the last three years. So overall, there are pockets of growth here in the Stanton River Zone, but there are some areas of concern, especially as we look at Stewartsville's scores. Looking at science now, in the Forest Zone, schools like Thomas Jefferson and New London continue to lead with consistently high pass rates. Otter River also reflects similar upward movement. Boonsborough and Forest Elementary remain stable, though Boonsborough has shown some variability from year to year. But overall, the Forest Zone is performing well again in science, with several schools exceeding division pass rates. So we'll continue to focus on sustaining their successes and finding areas to improve I do want to highlight a mistake that eighty-six of twenty-three, twenty-four for Big Island should read eighty-one. I apologize, I caught that mistake this morning, so it should say eighty-six to eighty-one. And then this past year declined to sixty-two percent. And then Montville again has started strong, but they've regressed a bit to seventy-eight percent. It's still solid scores. And they still comfortably met state benchmarks every year. So overall, there's kind of a mixed picture in Liberty Zone. Bedford Elementary and Big Island are below the state benchmark and they're going to need some targeted support. While Montville met the state benchmark, we still want to look at the trend and make sure that we can reverse that and go in the right direction. In the Stanton River Zone, Manita went from a seventy-eight to ninety-three percent, which is a fifteen-point gain. So I commend them for improvements in all core areas. Huddleston has been consistent, landing at seventy-one percent this past year. Stewartsville did jump fifteen percent, going from sixty-four to seventy-nine percent. So I commend them for those efforts. And then Goodview, while more stable, has hovered in the seventies and their scores are trending upwards. So in some Stanton River has been relatively stable over the years and there have been some significant improvements noted. So the next few slides will show secondary pass rates by school. So first, we're going to look at ELA at the secondary level. So Forest Middle improved from eighty-three percent two years ago to eighty-eight percent and they held steady this past year. Liberty Middle showed significant growth and moved from a fifty-six percent to seventy-five percent over the previous three years. Oh, I'm sorry, hit the wrong button. All right. So Liberty Middle showed really great growth from fifty-six to seventy-five. Stanton River Middle also grew from sixty-two to seventy-two percent over the last three years. Jefferson Forest High School remains the highest performer, though slightly declining from ninety-three to eighty-nine. Liberty High School dipped in twenty-three, twenty-four, but they recovered back to an eighty-five percent last year. And Stanton River High fluctuated slightly, but ended higher at eighty-three percent. So overall, there's been a lot of positive growth in our middle schools. There's been consistently high performance at the high school level, even though there's some slight dips show that we need to continue to maintain that momentum. Now we'll go to math. Forest Middle improved eighty-six percent and just slightly declined to eighty-two percent, but still eighty-two percent is very strong. Liberty Middle grew from sixty-three to seventy-seven percent and held steady last year. Stanton River Middle improved in twenty-three, twenty-four, but they slipped back to a sixty-four percent last year. Jefferson Forest High School declined from an eighty-eight to seventy-nine percent over the three-year period. Liberty High School improved to eighty-four percent twenty-three, twenty-four, but they dropped to a seventy-seven percent last year. And then Stanton River High saw the sharpest decline, going down from eighty-four to sixty-seven. Math achievement is, as you can see, is inconsistent across our secondary schools. Again, I just want to emphasize math achievement is historically very strong in Bedford County. We had a number of unique challenges last year, along with implementation of new standards, which did make math challenging. I do anticipate returning to the pass rates from previous years, but even so, we will still closely monitor math instruction as we implement our new curriculum. So looking at secondary science, Forest Middle continues to have the strongest scores, peaking at eighty-eight percent before going to eighty-four percent last year. Liberty Middle made a strong jump from fifty-seven to seventy-eight percent and they were able to sustain that last year. Stanton River Middle rose from fifty-six to seventy-three percent over the three-year period. Jefferson Forest High School stayed strong, they slipped a little bit from eighty-one to seventy-nine. Liberty High School showed gradual growth, moving from fifty-seven to sixty-seven percent pass rate. And then Stanton River grew steadily, going from fifty-four to seventy-four. So there is a positive trajectory in most of our secondary schools, especially at Liberty Middle and Stanton River High, where growth is the strongest. And then looking at history, remember that all students don't take a history test in high school. Only the ones that test are the ones that fail the SOL test in middle school are required to take that. So for this reason, high school history scores are not shown because we don't believe they accurately represent history achievement in our high schools. So the scores represent world geography and civic scores that are middle schools. So Forest Middle stayed strong, ranging from eighty-four to eighty-seven before dipping slightly to eighty-two. Liberty Middle showed steady growth from fifty-five to seventy-seven percent over three years. And then Stanton River Middle, however, declined from seventy to sixty-four. So Liberty Middle has some very clear positives, made over twenty points progress, which is very exciting. There's continued high performance at Forest Middle. And then we're going to obviously need to look into Stanton River and just continue to monitor and support them to try to get their scores where they need to be. Before I finish, I do want to say that there are clear areas in need of improvement, as you've seen. But overall, Bedford County academics are strong and they are improving. This is due to the hard work of our students, our teachers, our principals, the central office support team. Everybody works tirelessly to reach these high expectations we set for them, and so I'm proud of them. I look forward to continued improvement and achievement over the years. So at this time, I'll be happy to take any questions. Questions?
Thank you for doing that. That was, I want to work up short. Question on the secondary math, it looks like across the board, everyone did more, except for maybe Liberty Middle, that called. Do you guys have any opportunity to assess why that was?
Yeah, and one of the things that we're looking forward to is stability. We had new algebra teachers in all of our high schools last year. Combined with teaching new standards made it really challenging. What we found is when we've got stability in the classroom, scores are better. So we do have stability this year from previous years, so we're hoping that will improve. I think that was a big part of it. And then again, I just think the math standards were significantly more rigorous. And we knew they would drop a little, that's typical. But with continued focus on alignment and then implementation of the new curriculum, I think we can get back to where we need to be.
So these reflect the new cut scores then?
Not the new cut scores, but the new standards. And so those are already more rigorous. And so just teaching them, it's a lot of work for the teachers to adjust how they taught previously to the new standards.
So now, how's the new curriculum going?
Well.
You've implemented the new curriculum.
The new curriculum, yeah. It's secondary, I've been able to get into a few classrooms, I've been very pleased, heard a lot of good feedback from our teachers. Elementary has been a little more challenging because that's really kind of a shift in thinking to more exploration, inquiry-based math. There's been some challenges with getting some of the materials in the classrooms, but we are getting there. Ms. Bowyer's done a phenomenal job communicating, traveling to schools. So it's going, we're moving in the right place. Our teachers have been really positive. And so I think they're going to start to get used to teaching the new curriculum over the next few weeks and hopefully get some good momentum.
So the elementary teachers are pleased with it as well?
I think it's been more of a change for them than secondary, so when you have change, it's hard for a lot of teachers, for anybody. I will say their attitudes have been very positive, though. I mean, there's always a lot of frustration, but the feedback we've gotten is they're just willing to roll up their sleeves and keep working and keep trying, so.
So can you explain the difference, the main difference? You had said something and I couldn't catch it.
Yeah, at the high school, it's not so much a curriculum that's scripted. It's more of, it's a textbook, there are some resources that they can pull from. But the teachers do have flexibility to pull in other resources. The elementary, it's a little bit more scripted, not totally, not like our reading curriculum, but it's expected they stay a little bit closer to that script. One of the things that's been different for them is instead of jumping right into the procedures for how you would solve a problem, there's a lot of exploration ahead of time and a lot of mathematical discourse and discovery, and that's just a different way of thinking. I think that does align with our new standards, but it's a challenge to get our kids thinking that way, thinking deeply about it and getting them to have those conversations using mathematical terminology. So I think that's probably been the biggest source of frustration, but also it's why we like the curriculum. And once we continue to do it, I think the data is going to show.
So in layman's terms, it's not just learning how, but also the why.
Yes, learning why, absolutely. And then being able to justify their answers, instead of just solving it, why did we do that? That's been a big focus with the new standards.
Any other questions?
All right, well, going from fifty-six to thirty-six to thirty-one is great. I mean, our jump last year, we were very pleased with and to see that we've improved another five slots is great. Of course, driving, you know, one of the things that I've been focused on at work and one of the things we've been preaching is get one percent better every day. So we just, what can we do? So of course, we're going to share those victories and be very proud and say where we got a seventy-eight, let's get to an eighty, where we got a ninety, let's get to a, yeah, let's keep going. But just definitely some questions. So the decline, I guess, compared to the, or just being below the state standards in seventh grade math and algebra, that's going to, we're going to equate that to new teachers and a new curriculum, right?
In algebra.
In algebra, okay.
Seventh grade math has always been lower in Bedford and it probably will be. And the reason for that is in our advanced Math Seven, those students take the Math Eight test. And so you have a significant group of high achieving students that don't even take the Math Seven SOL. It's kind of, I hate to say low achieving students, but you have a pool that is lower performing historically. Not every division in the state does the same sequence as us. So when I look at Math Seven being lower, we anticipate that. It's the Math Eight that we really kind of look at to have a better representation. So it's not to say we don't care, we're not concerned with that, but we do expect those to be a bit lower just because of our sequence.
Yeah, and that's okay to have that expectation, but I don't think we should accept it, right? Like, so what would we, knowing that and knowing that's been kind of an area of concern, what do we then do? What do we change in that to, I mean, I mean, they're nine points off. I mean, I think that, I think we can get them to this. How, how do you think we need to think differently on maybe that? Just, and I don't know, so that's why I'm asking the question.
And these kids, again, are historically lower performing, so they're the ones that probably have some gaps with number sense. Just some of the basic skills, foundational skills, computation. So it really starts in elementary schools, is really filling those gaps. And that's one benefit of a unified curriculum, K to five, because it's, the curriculum is consistent. As far as if there are gaps and we know what they are, it's not random. And so if our teachers can implement with integrity, that's going to go a long way. And we do give a lot of support to Math Seven. I mean, that's a difficult subject to teach anyway.
All the more reason why it was super important that CPO and you guys worked together on that curriculum. So, you know, you plant the seeds and you got to reap the rewards after that. So thank you for that. Liberty Elementary with reading, math, and history. Any assessment to why that is?
Yeah, they just, it's been tough to kind of move them forward in the Liberty Zone in a lot of areas. There've been a lot of challenges with attendance, a lot of kind of transient student population. It's been some, not a lot of administrative turnover. It's, that just seems to be the toughest zone right now. And so that is where most of our support has been and will continue to be. We've just got to kind of form those relationships with teachers, support them in implementing the curriculum. We're hoping to see them push forward even more, but it's been frustrating, I mean, to not improve as much as some of our other schools with similar demographics.
It's really difficult, I think, a lot of times where, you know, each day, each lesson, especially in like math and other subjects build upon themselves. So if you're hit or miss, if you're coming to school, it's going to be really difficult to stay on track, to stay on task. So best place to get our students is in the building and they can get there and we can teach them, we can pull them along. So I think that's a note, like if that's the area we're seeing still lagging behind a little bit when it comes to attendance, let's put a full-court press, guys, we got to get these kids to school and we can really help them out. So two more points, Forest History was all lower, but Stanton River History was all up. So we're teaching the same history in those, right?
Correct.
History can be fun, so.
I agree.
Let's see what we can do. But again, really proud of the work that has been done from everybody, every stakeholder involved. It's been great. It's, we need to share that we're thirty-first. You know, tell everybody, I think there's other school divisions, other counties that would be very happy to be able to get their kids into Bedford County Public Schools. There's a lot to be proud of. We're always going to keep driving to be better. And then when we get to number one, someone's going to try to knock us off of number one, so it's hard to defend the title. So we're going to keep getting after that. So kudos to you and the team for all the hard work. Thank you.
I just had one more question. I've noticed on the Big Island Elementary, significant drops in almost all the subjects. Have you guys figured out why?
Yeah, that, we're, one of the things that's always, with such a small school, it doesn't take that many kids to fail, to drop your score significantly. So I guess that's the good news is we were able to identify those students that have fallen behind and so we're able to really start remediation early. It's, I think the concerning part is it is across multiple subjects and grade levels. So we've really got to get in there and figure out, you know, how we can support them. I will say that they have changed their schedule just a bit. They're trying to model some of the way they're teaching schedule after Manita, which was phenomenal. And so I know that principal's reached out to Manita's principal. The other thing that they're able to do is we've got some division support that's really prioritizing their time there to try to go through some coaching cycles with teachers. So we need to get in there quickly and early like we've done to really identify kind of where the weaknesses are. When scores drop that much, it's almost always an issue of alignment. And so we had new standards in math, history, and English. Typically, that means teachers haven't adjusted their instruction, they're teaching towards the old standard. So that's my assumption, that's kind of what we're going by until we know otherwise.
So I have to give a shout out to Ms. Lee at Manita Elementary.
Wow. Yeah, absolutely.
She is probably showing up at all admin calls and meetings with a huge smile on her face, saying, she should be. So congratulations, Ms. Lee, if you're watching. And to your team, impressive numbers and impressive growth and just consistency. So great job at Manita. All great questions that we've had. One of the things that I'll be interested in, and I'm not expecting you to answer it tonight, and I apologize for not reaching out beforehand, Dr. Drosper. Algebra scores at FMS, I'm really interested in those. I know there were some changes made. And so I'm interested to see what those scores have done over the last same time period.
Okay.
So just interested in that and what's being done to put FMS algebra back on track.
Okay. One thing, if you don't mind, I forgot to share this, we have Algebra Readiness Funds from the state. That's based on numbers of students in algebra. We have sort of reevaluated how we distribute that and shifted to the schools that need more support. So that's one thing Ms. Bowyer and I have spent a lot of time just talking about how to support schools that need it the most. So hopefully those changes will start to bring us back in the right direction.
All right, we will move on to dot oh three VRS audit, Mr. Pagler.
Yes, good evening, each year, outside auditors. Brown Edwards comes in and conducts an audit at the central office. The first thing they do is the VRS confirming all of our transmissions and our payments into the VRS system. So they do some sample testing as far as bringing employees on. Happy to report that we've got a clean bill of audit on that with no discrepancies noted this year on our VRS contributions for our employees. Happy to answer any questions. They do a lot of sampling, so it takes a while to get that done.
Any questions?
And that's a requirement by the state, so I have to go through that every year.
You're up again, school activity audit.
Another audit. We are in the midst of going through and probably in November, December, I'll present the central office audit on the year that we are combined with the county from Brown Edwards. But we also do school activity funds audit each year. So Brown Edwards goes out to each of our schools, meets with our bookkeepers and samples quite a few of the transactions over the year. As I've said in other years, if you've been here, they give a qualified opinion because of internal controls, because there's a bookkeeper in each school that receipts the cash, disburse, and does a lot of those things. There's not substantial separation of duties. But it's quite common in schools because of limited staff that that happens. From the central office standpoint, we've put controls in place to help mitigate that, but not enough for us to get a unqualified opinion. We actually do the bank reconciliation at the central office to watch over the funds in the schools. That being said, there were a couple on the school activity. Other than that, they said everything's presented fairly. There were a couple findings and I'll be going out and meeting with principals and bookkeepers to address a few of those issues. Some of those are very minor. A teacher fails to turn in the money within a day, the bookkeeper gets a ding. And they might turn it in one day late, but they're looking at all the information on that. So some of those are kind of very minor. Other ones, I'll have to address when I go around. But overall, very happy with the financial standing of our school activity funds. Happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Questions? Moving on to informational items, three dot oh one, Forest Redistricting Board Request, Executive Team.
Thank you. At the May eighth school board meeting, the executive team presented the beginnings of a proposed redistricting plan based on a request from the school board. At that meeting, we asked the board to extend the timeline of implementation, excuse me, if they wanted to move forward with redistricting. Tonight, we're returning with some updated enrollment information and we're asking for discussion with the board if there needs to be some changes or new considerations you'd like us to look at or if the board does not want us to continue looking at redistricting in this area. As we began the work, I'll just kind of remind us what we were looking at. When the board requested that we look at the populations in our forest schools with the current growth that we were anticipating, we were asked to look at not crossing school zones, so keeping all of that within the forest zone. With larger goals of lowering the populations at New London Academy and Forest Elementary because that is where we were seeing most of the development and most of our growth. But also increasing the number of students at Otter River Elementary. If you've been on the board a while, you know that at Otter River, because the population is so small, we typically have to add additional staff. We spend more per pupil at Otter River than any other school in Bedford County because it's so small. So our goal was to increase the number of students there so it would even out the cost of what we were putting there. Once the decision is made on how you would like to move forward, we can again present a better timeline moving forward. I am going to share what, if we were just to move from tonight with what we had talked about in May, what that timeline could look like, but everything is adjustable. I'm going to ask Dr. Calvert if she'll just do a quick overview of what we proposed in May for the forest zone changes.
Okay, so the proposed changes were four areas, two large areas. One being at the bottom of the screen, uh, moving a section of New London, what is currently New London to Otter River. And if you see the line at the bottom of the screen, the red line, uh, the whole brown section is now New London, and it would be moving everything to the left of the red line to Otter River. That's one of the major changes. The other major change is up where it has Thomas Jefferson, and there's a red arrow in the middle of the screen to the right. That is basically Lake Vista. Currently, the right side of Lake Vista goes to Thomas Jefferson, and the left side of Lake Vista goes to Forest. This proposal says that all of Lake Vista would then go to Thomas Jefferson. The two arrows at the top of the screen.
Would go to Forest, right?
Would go to, all of Lake Vista would go to Thomas Jefferson.
All of Lake Vista?
Lake Vista is just to the right of that red line, correct?
Yes, so.
Okay, so you're saying some now go to Forest, some go.
The left side of Lake Vista, like Forest Lakes now goes to Forest.
Yep.
The right side goes to TJ. It's kind of like right up through the middle. So all of it would go to TJ. It makes more sense busing wise.
Yep.
Because we've got two separate buses going in there right now. At the top of the screen, those are just really minor changes. Up in the top, where you see Otter River written O R E S, there's like four students up in that top section that were going to Forest, that would be moving to Otter River. And then we were cleaning up the bus routes. We were working when we did this with Art Lipscomb, this kind of the coordinator for the bus routes in the Forest Zone. And there's four students in that little crook up there that would be going, that were going to Forest, that now would be going to Boonsborough, um, just to kind of clean up the route in that area. So the two at the top are very small student changes, four and four, and then the bottom are more significant changes.
So I want to just share some current enrollment and capacity numbers. I think we, in May, we were working off projections and predictions. I will say that our kindergarten enrollment has come in lower than expected. And so I wanted to share updated numbers. So if you look at the chart, um, on this slide, the first column shows the current school enrollment as of, um, August thirtieth at each of our Forest Zone schools. Our most concerning capacity numbers are really at Forest Elementary, with New London coming in, um, at eighty-nine percent. We look and we really feel like we are at capacity at Forest Elementary with just our basic K five program. Right now, we don't offer any preschools or adaptive programs in Forest Elementary because of the size. We are really out of classrooms for more teachers. They were thinking they were going to have more students than actually came in kindergarten. And Mr. Hagler and the maintenance staff are really looking at where would we put additional students. What we were considering and what Mrs. Manley had to consider was, does she move her music and art classes to a cart where they're moving around the school? And if you do music or art, you know, that's really hard to be on a cart. So, um, when we're looking at capacity, we're trying to also make sure we have enough room for our resource teachers to have a place where kids could come and they have places to store all of their art and instruments. But I will say, it was very concerning if we got a large influx of children at Forest Elementary, we would really be running out of room for them, and they're at ninety-eight percent. New London is okay on classroom space at this time. They don't have any resource classes moving between classes. They do have preschool programs and they do have adaptive programs. Our concern with New London Academy is the capacity of the cafeteria and the library to accommodate more kids. They are very, very small, and so we've gone in and looked at the capacity of how long it would take us to feed children in that smaller cafeteria. And also just, even when you put one class in the library, it's very, um, tight. So we still have New London on our radar because of some of the capacity issues. I will say, um, there is the possibility that we could move a preschool program if we needed to, depending on how many classes we take at Thomas Jefferson. So that's always there, um, if we needed to move a preschool classroom at some point. We moved one last year, so we could move another.
So moving one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Moving one out and one in.
Moving one out, yes.
Sorry, thank you.
Our last capacity concern is Otter River with an enrollment and capacity that's really too low. This is one of our most expensive elementary schools to run, as I've, I've said, due to low numbers. So we really, um, want to get more students there. This year, we had to add two additional teachers over the staffing standards set by the board to ensure that we didn't have multi-grade classrooms. And so some of those classrooms are now, have twelve, thirteen students in them, which is very advantageous at Otter River. But that's really hard when you're putting that money there and you have class sizes of twenty-six or twenty-seven somewhere else. So that's just the reality of the things that we're dealing with. And we'd really like to get more students there, so it would balance itself out. So if we were to look, this next slide, this is capacities with the developments if we don't do any redistricting. And these capacity numbers and these development numbers, we got these numbers on what they're estimating with developments from, um, the county. So they give us these numbers under the Planning Commission. So we're taking a look at current enrollment from Slide one, and we're adding the expected number of students to each school just due to developments in the Forest area. If we did not do any redistricting, we have the potential of increased populations over the next few years that would create a bigger issue at Forest Elementary and New London Academy with them actually moving to overcapacity. This is the concern that brings us to the prospect of needing a redistricting to accommodate all the students, not just to fit them in the building, but to ensure they have areas that they can go to art and they can go to music, that they have plenty of space for their support staff and in the cafeteria and the libraries. So you see, even with the developments, Otter River does get up to about a sixty-seven percent, but we still have really good capacity at Thomas Jefferson. We really go over at New London, and Forest already is at capacity, so it'll even get a little bit tighter there. So on the next chart, what we wanted to look at, I'm so sorry, was the final enrollment projections. If we added what they've told us we're going to get with developments, and then we added in our proposed redistricting, what would capacities look like? So the final enrollment projection slide adds the projected number of student changes between schools with the plan that we shared with you in May. So you can see, uh, in our chart, at Boonsborough, we would like to move four students out of Forest Elementary to Boonsborough. That, that's the four that Leanne was talking about. At Forest Elementary, we'd like to move fifty-two to Thomas Jefferson, four to Boonsborough, four to Otter River. At New London, we have eighty-three students that could go over to Otter River. At Otter River, we would just be putting students, not taking any eighty-three from New London and four from Forest. And then we would be taking those fifty-two from Forest Elementary and putting them at TJ. So by doing that, all of our schools would reach, uh, between an eighty-five to ninety-one percent capacity, which does leave additional room for growth, and it balances out the sizes in Forest, New London, Otter River, and Boonsborough, which would really help with some of our staffing concerns when it comes to budgeting time. I do want to just bring your attention to one thing at Otter River that I think our team has been talking about and might need to revisit. When we count capacity there, that's including one mobile classroom. It's been there, it's been there a long time, but our maintenance department is telling us it needs a new roof, so we'd have to put some money in it. So we, what we might need to do is just look at that, because by moving students, we're getting them up to ninety-six percent capacity, but that's using that one classroom mobile. And so we just need to decide, do we continue to use it? Do we move it out of there, or what we need to do there? So we know we got a little work to do there. So from the April Board Meeting, we asked for just a little bit more time, um, and a little bit of a change to our timeline. So I've tried to put in red some of the changes, um, that have already occurred to our timeline and our timeline that we could do more moving forward. So right now, tonight, you're going to see the policy, um, from I G A that talks about what do we do in a redistricting as far as school zone transfers and, and that sort of thing. We also just need a decision. Do you want us to keep looking at this? Do you want us to rethink what we're looking at? But once we kind of have a plan of where you want to go, we'll need to send out letters to families, make sure we get information out. We need to hold that public hearing. And then eventually the board would hopefully be able to vote on their decision for redistricting or not by at least October or November. That would give us time to work with our county to update the G I S system. As you know now, the G I S system, you can go in there and look at your address and it tells you what school you're in. So we need to get all that updated. It would also give us time to prepare new bus routes and move some of our bus drivers. Also, we'll need to move some of our teaching staff because the teachers and parents will follow the students. And that would have us ready for implementation in August of twenty twenty-six. So really what we're asking tonight is really just some, some discussion about where you would like for us to go at this point. We just kind of need a decision to help us know what's next, um, before we go too far. So we can either move forward with the redistricting plan, just like we presented in May. We could change the redistricting plan and propose something new to you. We can take parts of the plan and implement it. We can, uh, leave some parts of the plan off. Again, our biggest concern is Forest Elementary because we're feeling that tightness right now, and the principal and the staff and the kids are feeling that, um, tightness. So we could do something with Forest, hold off on the other. You may have even a, another idea of things that we could do. Or we could do no more action moving forward on redistricting at all. So really, I think for us, um, we are happy to answer any questions. We, we'd also love just any questions that you have that might help us with what you want us to do next.
And so let me, let me add in that third one down. No action moving forward would constitute needing more capacity. And you don't like this, and I don't like this, but that means you have to put portables there. And so that's not always a good solution because portables, uh, are only made for temporary use and they end up being forever.
And, and no disrespect, but when we've got availability in buildings.
No, I get it. I, I, that's why I said I'm not for that.
Okay.
But, but that would be, if, if you don't make some kind of change, and you know, before I said you can make one decision or you can split it off. So, you know, I wrote down here, you can move forward with just Fo- uh, Forest Elementary to TJ or New London to, um, Otter River, or Forest to Otter River, or Forest to Boonsborough. You can look at it different ways, and the one that we need to address the most is how do we alleviate Forest? And, and where are we going? So that, I just want to clarify that. You know, no action would mean capacity is going to have to be created.
So before we go into questions, uh, it's right at six o'clock, and so I want to go ahead and, uh, switch over to public comment. And then we will come back to three dot oh one, uh, to continue that, that discussion, so. So public comment, uh, the public comment portion of tonight's agenda is limited to forty minutes. Speakers are asked to state their name and voting district. The School Board is here to listen to your comments, but will not engage or respond to speakers during this forty-minute period. Please remember that this is a public meeting and that we expect all speakers to refrain from any foul, profane, abusive, or hateful language during their comments or anytime while in attendance during this meeting. We also ask that speakers keep their remarks objective and about the school in nature. Please keep all comments limited to matters related to the public schools and any comments that are harassing or amount to a personal attack against any identifiable individual, whether board member or staff or student, or having the potential to cause unnecessary delay or disruption to this meeting are prohibited. This is a public meeting for public matters. If a speaker is not present when their name is called, we will proceed with the next name on the list. An individual who has not signed up to speak may not substitute for that time slot. Individuals will have four minutes to address the board. An alarm will sound when an individual has thirty seconds remaining, and a second alarm will sound when the allotted four minutes have expired. When this second alarm sounds, please discontinue speaking and allow the next person in line to come to the podium. Should you be unable to finish your comments, please send or give them to Ms. Johnson, and she will give them to board members. Please do not adjust the microphone at the podium as it has been positioned for optimum audio quality. Nathaniel Gil- Gilliam?
Gilliam.
Gilliam?
Good evening. My name is Nate Gilliam. I'm a resident of District Seven. My children are students at Liberty Middle School, Bedford Elementary School, and Bedford Primary School. I'm currently serving as a head coach of cross-country at Liberty Middle School. I'm here because I'm concerned about the policy limiting parents from transporting athletes to events. This parental transportation policy limitation is negatively impacting the ability of the cross-country teams from fully participating in the Blue Ridge Cross Country Meat Series. The meat series is an eight-meat series. However, there's only transportation approved for five meats. That means we can't run three meats of the series. The cross-country program is a program that we want to grow. This is the second season that Liberty Middle has participated, and the interest is very strong. The runners and parents are very engaged. So I strongly urge you that you endorse parental transportation as a budget-neutral alternative for this season. I've emailed you all a proposed letter for your review. All I need you to do is sign it. If you delay this or don't act by October, then we will not be able to run any meats after September twenty-fifth. That would affect our scheduled meet on October second. Lastly, I ask that the board review the transportation policy in order to clarify it so that it does not contradict the Board's two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen resolution. Thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions for me, you can call me or email me.
There are no other, uh, slots that have been signed up for, but if there's anyone present who would like to speak. With that, I will close public comment for tonight. All right, getting back to three dot oh one, uh, Forest Redistricting Board Request. So questions? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Uh, that was amazing, and a lot of work seemed like went into that and, um, looked like it could solve the problem. But I was curious with the auto, if I had the right school, could you still move a significant or enough students over without using the mobile, um, classroom?
Yes.
If that was eliminated, would you still have a?
Yeah, we would just have to look and, um, maybe just look at how close, um,
Probably, yeah, probably we would, Rainie and I talked, we would probably move the line on the left side of four sixty, I guess the south side of sor- so four sixty, because that's the farthest away, back towards New London a little bit. We would find enough for twenty kids to stay on the New London side.
So, but there's other options, because what I didn't see is the kids who are currently attending Otter River from the Liberty Zone, you're not moving those, is that correct?
We didn't, just because we weren't changing anything with zoning.
Right, but that, I, I just want to make sure the board understands. So we can get rid of a mobile unit and still have capacity because you've got students who are at Otter River, and y'all keep me honest, Otter River Elementary, who could easily go to Bedford Primary and Bedford Elementary. Or Bedford, uh, or Big Island, if, if the need were to arise. Okay, so does that help from a capacity standpoint? So, and I'll wait.
You sure you want me to go next? Keep in mind, we were trying to keep this into one zone.
Well, that's my point. One zone meaning Forest would be one zone, but if Otter River, who is currently split, it used to be 48-52, I don't know, or 42-58, I don't know if that's still the case. What I'm trying to drive home to the board is that there are capacity availability at Otter River should we need it, if we needed to move some of those students who are truly in the Liberty Zone to their elementary schools.
And what you're saying is there's kids that go to Otter River that follow the path of Liberty Zone?
That's correct. That is the only school that we currently have.
Liberty Middle, Liberty High School. And we didn't look.
I'm just putting it out there so the board understands that.
And I'll write down every suggestion that we can always come back to.
Yeah, you could go if you want to go next.
All right, so obviously I got started with the school board fighting redistricting. My opinion has not changed much. A couple of questions I do have is, so you'd mentioned that kindergarten enrollment was lower. What is the, going to be the outgoing fifth grade? So if we are scaling lower and we are outgoing fifth graders is more than what we've got incoming, do we have a negative attrition rate or a negative?
Randy's.
Birth rate?
Yeah, pretty much.
It is.
We do know, Randy and I have been, well Randy more than I, because he's better with math. We've been doing some projections for the next five years and Weldon Cooper is saying our area, our birth rates are going to start to rise again, so we hopefully will see a positive impact.
Because I know in 22-23 school year, when we did that projection, we projected, and correct me if my math is wrong, I need to do the quick math, it was 1685 was our projection for the 22-23 school year. This year, and this is just the Forest Zone, this year, 25-26, we're currently enrolled at 1650-ish. So we're not even hitting the numbers that we were projecting three years ago. And I know there's a whole myriad of issues that go into that. So I kind of, number one, my point is we're not trending up as fast as we thought we were. I have an ideological issue with, you know, redistricting out of people that have chosen to live in a certain area. You know, personally, my family, we chose to live in the New London District. That's where I went to school, for my kids to go to school, so you have that. The next thing, and I think we, I obviously agree Forest needs to be addressed. I don't know that our current compositional board is the one that should be doing that. You know, we've got, four of our seats are up for election in two months. Should we be making decisions right now that will impact that board or table it to next winter there? Especially if we're projecting down and kindergarten or fifth graders are moving up, providing more room. Again, I think I like the, one of the options you had given in there was just go after the Forest Elementary Zone. I think that's the cleanest way. Obviously, I'm more intimately involved in New London. I understand what you're saying with the cafeteria capacity and the library capacity, but I don't know if that's a right now concern. And obviously on the other side of it, can you go back to the development numbers? Do you have to address the development numbers? And I appreciate community development putting these additional students. And obviously they're just going off of type of builds. But I know like, the only thing I'm aware of in the Forest Elementary Zone is Grand View Courses, who is being funded by Runkin Pratt. So I'm not certain their demographic is looking for people with kids. You've got in the New London Zone, the 91, I'm more, there's three large developments coming in. And they are coming in, but they've not broken ground on the first footer yet on any of the three. And I know with the largest one, they're at least a year behind their schedule for it.
And this may help you as you're looking. This is what the county gave us. This is one of the slides we shared, so. This is what the county gave us what's coming and.
Absolutely. I just disagree with the county. And just from what I know of the construction, I don't know if we're, I think they might be projecting a little aggressively. And I'm sure that's what they're being told by builders. But I, I know how long it takes to build a development, like build developments. They're not as fast, they're not as far along as I think they think they are. And like I said, Grand View Courses, that's developed by Runkin Pratt. I don't know how many students we're really getting from that. So I think, I agree, we need to probably look at something for Forest Zone pretty quickly. I don't know that the rest of them have to be done by this board right now, especially with a new board coming in in the next, you know, three or four months. I think this might be a decision along with all the other budget decisions for that new board. Just my thoughts on that.
I'll give you a couple of numbers and, and you know, we're projecting, we're projecting in the future. So Dr. Woodford and I have been looking at, you know, doing projections for next year and five years out. We're changing the model a little bit. Weldon Cooper's, which is employed by the state to do some factoring and looking at birth rates and what to expect. I can see where they've been off on their projections going backwards. So when I project forward, I'll take a cut off of that based upon how they're missing that mark. But just at New London, the fifth grade going out is 44, the kindergarten was 54 this year. So it was a little bit up. And then looking at our enrollment trend, Weldon Cooper's is looking at expected kindergarten going up to 636 for the 26-27 years, 671 in 27-28, 29, 678. They're usually off by about 5%. So we were at actual, I think, 601 this year. So they are expecting a trend upward. It won't get to that because we won't hit those numbers based upon historical trend. They're a little bit off with what comes into kindergarten, but it is starting, it looks like the birth rate and stuff is going to trend up a little bit. That's for the whole county. I don't know where those kindergartners are coming. It could be anywhere in the county. So we take that and apply it to the schools, so I just don't know what zones. So just being honest on that.
No, no, I appreciate it.
You have questions or comments?
Not at this time.
I just had a question. I was, can you show the map again?
Sure. I, I left all the slides in from when we did the presentation last month. If it's easier for us to just go to the maps for.
There's more detailed maps.
There's more detailed maps for men.
I haven't more to present.
No, I don't have more to present. We just had more detailed maps before.
Oh, no, I don't need the detailed ones.
Okay, you just want the, okay, I'm gonna get back to it. This is like an elevator button. I'm pushing it really fast. There we go.
So just looking at the amount of land that Otter River already covers, and I'm just thinking bus routes, time getting there, how early the kids are going to have to be picked up. Have you guys considered that extra? Because that's a lot of land to cover.
Yeah, there are not many children on it. The roads are not, honestly, the. It's not a huge amount of difference, like just coming in rather than, you know, dropping them at Forest, going up just a little bit, so.
If we were to go with this plan, I would definitely, you know, south of 460 right there, move into, I know that's not that many students, but that is a big difference of time on a bus because those are harder places to get into. You go in Blackwater, you go in some of those roads. It's going to be a little more difficult to get in and out, especially even if parents are driving them themselves. So I would, couldn't be that many students in that area. You know, I think the amount of, the amount of additional time on buses, the amount, I don't know if the, if the juice is worth the squeeze there.
We did consult with some of our bus trainers and looking at the routing, who are used to the routes. And yeah, it's a longer ride, I would admit, because I'm used to that area a little bit and coming across between 460 to 21. Bus driver thought we could do it with, within our current constraints of how long our bus rides. It wouldn't be much longer than what we've got right now. Doesn't mean that one bus would pick up everybody along the road. They would split it up to make sure it wasn't too many.
But when we were picking this, we had him there the whole time and making the decisions of where we would cut the line and that's some of the cleanup up at the top too because of bus routes making more efficient. So we kind of, you know, took that into consideration, what they thought was doable.
And you're right, four kids, you know, if we're not going to do a huge plan, it may not be worth disrupting those four families, you know, for just a little bit. I think we were trying to equal out capacity as much as possible.
Well, in the Forest Zone, if you look at it, it's, it's that, right now, like it's that whole bottom section and then it goes up into that where those arrows are. It's the oddest shaped thing. It's kind of like.
Hourglass.
Yeah, it's like an hourglass. It's like this. It's a very odd shaped zone.
And I know, is that up like Charlemont, that sort of area?
Yeah, if you go to the road sign, if you go, hold on a second, I've got them here. The ones, the ones that moved to Otter River are actually Elk Valley, Old Syfax Road, and Perry Lane. And then the ones that moved to Boonsborough are Scarlet Lane, Grassy Mountain Lane, and Tabernacle Lane.
So that's just four students?
Yeah, it's four moving to Otter River and four moving to Boonsborough. And that was really from the bus lead saying, this is causing us problems right now. Could we move, since we're shifting, could we clean this up?
Yeah, clean the transportation up.
Any comments or process?
I mean, I totally get Mr. S. Hill's point of maybe we don't need to do something over there in New London. But there are things that need to be done. And money, I don't think we're going to be getting a lot of it, to be honest. So needing extra teachers because we have larger classroom sizes is tough to do. Needing extra teachers because we have odd classroom size, so we have a very small school that has extra teachers for small, that's also tough in the budget to deal with. We're here now and I think we can make some good decisions. That's what we're here for, to do. I remember we have not acted several times on things that I feel like we should have acted on and they're very tough and we haven't. And then we ended up spending $2 million on projects and different things that we quite frankly do not have. That being said, sometimes making small adjustments may be the, may be the way to go. I can be swayed on anything to see what the best thing is because I don't, what I don't know is what I don't know. So I'm, I'm open to listen to any suggestions here. I will say that it is a good idea that if someone is zoned for the Liberty Zone and they're going to Otter River, it would make sense to go to the Liberty Zone. Now, I know we did not discuss that. If we move in a bunch of kids over there to a school that we're already at 50 something percent, that doesn't, that also does make a lot of sense without having someone, other kids to kind of move in there. So I just, I definitely am wrestling with a couple of different concerns, but I don't think doing nothing is the answer. We've done nothing for a while and I don't think it's gotten us anywhere. So I like, I like the thought process on it. I think it just, everything sort of needs a little bit more discussion. I think that the TJ moves, I think, makes sense. I think cleaning up the bus routes makes sense. I understand what you're saying with New London, it's like, well, maybe we don't need to move because the projections aren't there.
And I'm not saying we never need to move. But I would say with, with the way it is currently drawn up, I don't like that map. I don't know that it gains us bus efficiency or gains us any real movements that we need, you know, to alleviate. The concern in New London is not the Blackwater area or the, you know, right button up against Huddleston. The concern in New London is we've got three large developments starting to break ground. I don't know that it's going to affect next school year, but it's going to affect a school year. And so I think, I'm, I'm with you. Let's clean up bus routes. Let's move, you know, if you've got the left side of the street going to one way and the light, let's change that. I mean, let's make some of those.
The friends are, the friends are like, well, you go to this school, I go there.
Yeah, yeah.
That happens somewhere, of course.
I'm good with making common sense moves. I just think some of these larger moves that are going to affect, you know, families for a long time coming is one of those things of, yeah, and all these are going to affect families to one extent or the other.
The other concern I have with Otter River, which I've, I've heard it from people in District Seven and I, and I get it. We've got a good school there. We have capacity. Some of these moves that we then decide to make, all of a sudden we're at 96% capacity and you don't have a bus loop that's big enough to accommodate parents and you got nowhere really to put it. So if you had to lay out where everybody is in this county now and say, and we didn't have any schools and say, where would you put schools? There's a, there's a, a lot of the schools we have would not be in the, in the locations where they are. But that being said, we don't have a billion dollars to build new schools in the spots that we want them, so we have to kind of be smart, you know. So I'm still, you know, maybe that's why, do you see any other way to pull kids from New London? Some, is there no breakup because of 460?
Before we start making changes, I would like to make a few comments. So I want to address a couple of things that's been said. Do we make changes? Absolutely. This has been a can that this board for the last 10 years has kicked down the road. And it's time to get some results. It's time for change. It's time to make it happen. You got to rip the Band-Aid off and you got to make a plan. To this board, I've asked you for over a year and a half to make this decision. So this is nothing new, nothing new. I asked you back in May to make this decision. I wanted to make it happen in August. Here we are in September and we're talking about not making a decision yet again. I just think that's uncalled for. Yes, I'm leaving come December, but I'm concerned for this board and this county school systems. Money is not something that you have a lot of. And so you've got to use the resources that we have today. And this is making a plan because unfortunately, the other two areas are not growing. The Forest Zone is growing and so we have got to be prepared for these students who are coming. Yeah, the numbers may change and may shift, but it's coming. And so I personally walk in Forest Elementary School and I know some of you have toured it with me, that's a definite change. Is it to say, yeah, you know, it's unfortunate that we need to move students from New London to Otter River or from Boonsborough? I get it, it's a change. I remember when we took kids from Forest Elementary and shipped them to Boonsborough. You would have thought that was the end of the world, but it was a necessity that needed to take place. I urge this board to take action. Now, I think that we look at this plan and if we want to grandfather current students in, then we say, if you're currently attending this school, K through five, and you want to finish out your years and even if you've got family who want to fit, you know, if you've got siblings that they're at the same time and they want to finish out, that's language that we can use. But to me, we've got to make decisions to say, this is what's best for Forest in order to move forward. And so we continue to kick this can down the road and I just don't think that's the right thing. I know Mr. Hill asked, is this something that this board should be deciding? I can certainly tell you if I was a new board member coming in, I would want the current board to make the decision so I can outplay and say, hey, this is what, you know, the decision that was made and we move forward. So I, I get it, but I can tell you that it doesn't matter who's sitting in District Four seat. When I make a decision, it is for the benefit and the best thing of Bedford County Schools and Forest. And I would hope that whoever that is in my seat would make that same decision. So I don't think that changes from December to January. And so I think our teams, again, this is like the second or third rendition of what they've brought to us and we've asked for changes and we've said, no, no, yes, yes. I forgot the number of hours that this executive team has sat down and looked at bus routes and tried to figure out what is the most efficient way to do what we've asked. The second thing, another thing I'll add is that mobile unit at Otter River, it should have been moved five years ago. I have no desire to put any of our kids in a mobile unit. And so especially when we've got schools at 40 and 50% capacity, it makes no sense. And so that's my comment. You know, I personally, and I'm one of seven, I get it. I think we need to move forward with this plan. It's advertised, we do public comments. It doesn't mean we can't tweak onesie twosies if that, that feedback comes back. But I do think that the, the action should be that we consider grandfathering in those changes. You know, for students who are there, families who are there, who, you know, have started K through five or fourth, fifth, let them finish. But, you know, looking at five years and 10 years out, this is the best plan to do for the current situation that we're in. I'm going to remind everyone sitting at this table, we asked for 4.2 million dollars. We got $1 million. Money is not coming your way, period. It's not. As a board, we made decisions to try to recruit students to Bedford County. And I don't want to use the word recruit, but. And I don't want to use the word recruit, but to say, hey, we're available. We have, um, space in our Stanton River area where, you know, we've got a, another school that we chose not to do anything with last year. By the way, it cost us an average of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to run a school that is not even near capacity. Again, you're not getting additional funds. So I just, I think it's the best thing to do is we've got to rip the Band-Aid off. We got to stop kicking the can down the road. We've got to make decisions that's best for our zones. Forest Middle, New London, they're at the seams. I mean, and I get it, yes, we have classroom space, but you got a cafeteria, you got a library issue. And we all talk about how the extracurricular things that our students are doing, we won't live to be able to have space. That's my comments before we go and try to change this plan. So I don't know if anyone's interested in moving forward or if you still want to have that conversation.
Can I add something to that?
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Hill. But if we rely on the next board to do this, we may get no more traction. We may get less traction. And making that known, if we don't do something now, it's good, it's going to prevent us from doing something later. Because to follow along, what Mr. Hill's saying here is that we need to make, we need to do this one and when we're done with this one, they'll kill me, but we need to make another tough decision.
Yep.
And, and there needs, there, there really is, when you look at this as a whole, there's probably two to three tough decisions that need to be made. And, and I don't want to put any fear out there right now, but they're, they're right when the money's not there. And, um, we don't have the ability to go put capacities in buildings. So to me, I think we, we, we need to do something now so that we can then prepare for Phase Two. Face, Phase One's not gonna cut it.
If we went with this proposed plan, the only way we really could do that to alleviate the, then now other side of the pressure on Otter River would be to look at moving those kids into the Liberty Zone, correct?
No, because the ninety-six percent capacity includes students coming in from a new development. That's not there. Now, at that point, then you could say, we're going to move students from Otter River to their Liberty Zone. So making this decision does not put you over capacity at Otter River. They're telling you upfront, there is a planned development. But again, I want to avoid the mobile unit and then we also have capacity at the other two elementary schools, primary and elementary school that could move those students from Otter River to that area.
Got it.
I will say, if the board would like us to relook at that four sixty corridor, I, I would welcome the representatives who live in that area to come meet with the exec team. If you, you know, you travel the roads, you know them. Um, I, I feel like our Forest Elementary change is so simple and so easy right there with the whole TJ. Um, but we could also relook at that and bring something back next month. The other thing, the policy on zone transfers and redistricting that's gonna come forward tonight allows us to make individual decisions for schools based on what they need. So to address that issue of people who've bought their homes, um, you know, we could grandfather those children in, but make the announcement to anyone coming in that if you move into this area moving forward, you're going to be going to Otter River, things like that. Um, so that gives us some flexibility. So I, I think there is some flexibility. I'm happy for any suggestions if, if you think there's a better cut or a better way. And I think it also may help if you allow us to not just think about keeping everything in the Forest Zone, but if there's some, I mean, there's some families who are going to New London who are actually closer to Beffer Elementary. So there are other things that we could look at if the board wishes.
Couple of questions. Do, do those numbers that, that you showed us tonight reflect the, uh, the current zone transfers, the hundred and fourteen that are already in place?
Yes.
Yes.
So there may be a large portion of those people who say, I'm going back to my zone. So those, those numbers create some additional flux.
And I did look at specific zone, we've had those at New London and Forest Elementary closed for a while, but we do have, um, about ten zone transfers at New London and ten zone transfers at Forest Elementary um, that have been allowed through time because it was low class sizes.
But, but, uh, but this policy would not change the zone transfer. Every, every school would then have capacity, correct?
Correct. I think the only thing you have to think about is if right now you were to say, this is gonna happen for Forest Elementary and then we then allow everyone we're saying is moving to TJ to do his own transfer request and we approve it, we're back to the same. I think that's what the board has to think about.
Well, then, but you, you wouldn't approve to go over capacity, I apologize.
Go ahead. I believe that, uh, that the policy that the IGA looked at gives allowance for those things and veto power by the superintendent to, to nix zone transfer requests that go against the rezoning. So I, I think those things all need to be considered and it also allows for the grandfathering, right? If you are happy where you are and your kids are in that school, keep them there. Because, you know, we're, we're not looking at an immediate crunch. We're also looking at, you know, Dr. Trosper's, uh, information tonight. You know, why do we see dips in these numbers? A lot of it is because of instability. And a lot of that instability is overcrowded classrooms. You know, we're not seeing that in the, in the Thomas Jefferson Zone, but we're seeing, uh, instability causing ripples in those numbers. I've been on the board now almost two years and I've seen the can being kicked. And, uh, I agree that we need to do something. And what's, what's on the table is, I think, a good, a good option.
I'd like to just say.
Nope.
Um, I'd like to just say that the best way to save money is zone transferring. Um, that's what transfer, sorry, redistricting. And I think that that would gain some respect as well from, um, the, uh, Forest supervisors. I believe they can see that we're doing all we can. However, I did have a question and that is, I know that the trend has been, um, for, for, um, people to go to homeschooling or other alternative schooling. And I think the trend is coming back to the public schools, but, or is it continuing to, to go away from public schools? That's, that's the thing I, I didn't know what I was at Beffer County.
Um, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. I do know that we've had a lot of families coming back from homeschool. And, and I'm talking about the families who, um, not people who are, are homeschooling and have a, a true belief that that's the best way to, um, educate their families. These are people who left during the pandemic for fear, um, some who were trying to, you know, avoid truancy. And we're getting those kids back and we're seeing a little bit that now they're behind. So we're gonna have to put some extra resources there. We are seeing a little bit of a trend of kids coming back from our private schools around us too. And I'm not sure why that is, but it could be the cost and just the economy, I don't know, but.
Do we have? I gotta have somebody say what they want, I can't.
I've got, I don't know if I'm gonna make an official motion yet, but.
Hold, hold on a second, we're not looking for a motion, correct? We're looking for consensus to.
It is entirely your call, Mr. Chairman. I know you and I have discussed consensus recently. Um, it has always been the practice of this board to accept consensus by majority, even though that's not technically correct, um, procedure according to Robert Tools. Again, your call because it's been the practice of this board. If you want it to be a vote, so that there's no question of, you know, legitimacy, um, then I would suggest someone make a motion to suspend the rules and be very specific, make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of taking a, or making, taking action on redistricting plan or however you want to word it. But the motion to suspend rules has to be very specific to that. And then a motion would have to be made, whatever, to move forward, to put a, you know, full stop, whatever the motion is.
I think that we have a few things that we haven't clarified. One is not having the, um, Otter River, the extra building, the trailer. So you're gonna have to adjust something there.
Not at this time.
No.
No, not at this time.
And, and this doesn't mean this is the exact plan. What we're trying to say is we are ready to move forward with zone changes. We still have to make a public, um, what's the word I'm looking for, Ms. Johnson?
Public hearing.
Hearing for those who are impacted. So if we decide to move forward, any parent, child who are impacted in these changes will receive letters from our executive team saying, you will be impacted with the proposed changes. We will do a public hearing. After we have that public hearing, any changes that we recommend that we want to see in our plan before we take action, we can then say, we make a motion to do this with these exceptions or these changes and then we take a vote and move forward. What, what I'm trying to do is we have to move something forward so we can start making decisions. Because what's gonna happen is we're gonna get to November, December, January. We're gonna say, well, it's too late to do anything, let's kick it down the road one more time. And so that's what I'm trying to do. So just because we're moving this forward, we could come back and say, that little line that, um, Mr. S Hill talked about at the bottom of the New London area, that could be something that we make a proposed change based on public hearing of, that is the right thing to do. This is a plan, again, that our team has spent hours on and made a proposal based on capacity requirements that we've asked them to do based on our current facilities. That's, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to move forward.
So I ask her to put that slide back up because you can accept it as the proposal that we brought or you can make your own recommendations tonight. Then that goes to, as I understand, a public hearing and then you can go back and tweak it again. And then give us, but, but what we need is to be able to by November, okay, here's the accepted plan. It's been through, it's been through the, you know, parent feedback, it's been through all of the scrutiny and then we move. So tonight you either say you're going to do nothing, which I hear you saying is not, let's don't kick it down the road again, or come up with some better solution, if you don't choose number one.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just share with you, if the, if the goal is to take action, like that official vote by the October meeting, um, then I was assuming the board would want to hold a public hearing at JF because that's the zone that we're mainly talking about. It does not have to be JF, but just in preparation for that, I did reach out and get the availability of their auditorium. They are only available two weeks before the October meeting. One of those weeks, um, does not give us, by law, we have to provide seven days' notice. So if the board were decide, were to decide tonight that we want to hold this public hearing and we want to do it before the October meeting and we want to do it at JF, one of those weeks that they're available does not give us that time that we need. So it would have to be the week of September twenty-second, if we want to do it at JF. And if you want it to do it before the October meeting, a lot of ifs, but I want you to have all the information. Now, we could do it here anytime before the October meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to this board. I mean, to me, it makes sense to have it at JF, since it's in that area.
There's not gonna be enough room here, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, and then here would just be, yeah.
Yes, you'd be definitely be limited on space here and larger venue at JF. And it's, like I said, the majority of the families, you know, are in that zone, that's the zone we're talking about, so.
So September twenty-second is the date we would need to have?
No, sir, the week of September twenty-second, any day that week.
Oh, any day that week, okay.
Yes, sir, just the week of September twenty-second, twenty-second is the Monday.
So that's in two weeks. And we have to give a seven-day notice.
So, so just to clarify, we're gonna present as is to everyone?
That's if we want to make a decision.
Yeah, that's if we want to make a decision.
And then we can change things later.
We can, yeah, so we, we need to push it forward tonight if that's what this board chooses. We have to have seven days to advertise a public hearing, which Ms. Johnson has told us it needs to take place the week of September twenty-second based on availability at Forest or Jefferson Forest High School. Which I, I think that's where it should be, but since it's in that zone. Then, based on feedback and comments, emails that we receive, and I encourage the board, when you get information, our executive team is available between now and the next meeting. So don't wait until the next meeting to ask questions, to get those questions answered or clarified. And then as a board at our October meeting, we will make a motion based on whatever changes we want to make to the plan that we're moving forward to say, these are the details of our plan. We vote on it, we take action and it starts to be, uh, implemented by our executive team for next August of twenty twenty-six.
What about the part about possibly sending some of them to the Liberty Zone?
That's not, that's not an option at this point, unless we come back in October and we say, you know what? We want to go ahead and send all students from, you know, but we would have to then hold a public hearing for those students, correct?
That's why we're Phase Two.
That would be Phase Two, so.
Yeah.
But it's not a capacity issue at this point for Otter River.
But the, but the students at Otter River from the Liberty Zone are zone transfers at this point?
No, no.
No, that was an election.
There, there are some that are zone transfers, but there are forty-two percent, and my percentages may be off, that are in the Liberty Zone who attend Otter River as their elementary school in GIs by choice. Uh, that's the way we have it set up, yes, sir.
So if I could just say, I think, um, so my thinking about notifying parents and things like that, I think we want to be very specific and be able to show them on a map exactly what we're thinking. I think we also have to be ready to tell them what we're gonna do about grandfathering or not grandfathering and we still have that policy to pass. I, I think also if, if we move forward, I would like to send letters to those, like mail letters to those families, not just depend on them to get that information on our website or whatever. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure September may be rushing it for the public hearing when I think October would be just, I'm just thinking about, right now, we don't really have an answer about what we want to do about grandfathering in. What are we gonna tell parents in a letter to come to the public hearing?
Cause what we're, what we're saying, and sorry to interrupt you,
No, no.
Is we're saying in sometime between eleven and fifteen days, we're gonna have a meeting to discuss a major disruption. We gotta mail letters, which I'm assuming takes, if we're mailing out tomorrow, best case scenario, they get them by Tuesday next week-ish.
Yeah, best case scenario, I get them out tomorrow.
And that's if you mail them out tomorrow. Yeah, which I, that will happen, so.
Do we even have them listed like that? We gotta go back in and list them all, like we got work to do before.
And so could we give them, I mean, I don't know what considered proper notice.
We just need to, we just need to give the public seven day, by law, we need to give the public seven days' notice of a public hearing. And, and the reason those were the dates that I gave is I checked with JF principal, those were the only two weeks that the auditorium was available with, with no issues. Um, and that's what I'm saying, it could be here, but it, it just makes sense to have.
But we also have Forest Middle, we have TJ.
Could we do Forest Middle and maybe back it up two weeks?
Yeah, we have other options.
I think we could do some others.
I did not check with any other principals, only checked with, with, uh, JF.
Forest Middle might be a, another option we hadn't talked about.
There's also a cafeteria, it doesn't have to be in, in the theater, I mean, so.
And as far as the time and, Mr. Hill, what you were asking, we have to do the seven-day notice. I was going off of the, um, the timeline where it had a vote for, a vote for this at the October meeting. So we needed to have that hearing before the October meeting. So that, that was the reason for when the, you know, the public hearing would, would have been scheduled for.
Okay. No, I was just gonna say, and, and we did that timeline. I, I, I feel confident that a month or two won't make that big a difference in the work we have to do in the spring because there's still a lot of work we need to do. I want to give parents accurate information and you accurate information. I don't want to be standing in a public hearing and someone say, that's, you gave us the wrong, you know, I just, I want to be sure we've got it.
So you're suggesting that we postpone the public hearing until after the October?
Um, I'm just saying.
Possibly, or October meeting, or, or meeting? Possibly, or October meeting, or board meeting?
I think it doesn't have to be after the October board meeting. I think it, if we could get it earlier in October, give us a little bit more lead time. I just don't want to feel like we're pushing you to rush, because I think another, even if it is after the October board meeting, it's not.
If we were to vote in November instead of October, you would still get this board voting for it, and you would also give the staff and parents enough time to really review it. Because I mean, I'm, I, if you're getting a letter of seven days, I don't know about you guys, but I've got soccer and karate and dance, and, you know, it, it's, it's hard to organize that in just a few days.
So Ms. Johnson, if you, if you will, I'm thinking October second, or, which is a Thursday night, or October seventh, which is a Tuesday night, if you can check availability for any of the facilities in Forest area?
Did you say the second and seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Two, seven.
Okay, I will, I will definitely check with JF. Um, is, is, if we do it at Forest Middle per se, are we able to livestream it? Okay, we'll, we'll check JF, we'll check other facilities.
So a public hearing, I, I'm just trying to understand, so it needs to be?
No meeting by law has to be livestreamed, it's just always been the practice for years now, and we have always done it.
And are we saying that the hearing has to be, like, all of us up front? Or can it be, you come in and we're having discussions, looking at maps?
It has to, it's, it's like you're set up like board.
Okay, and then, and then questions and showing, et cetera?
And the, and the public hearing is like public comment.
Okay.
But they speak on that topic only, so the board does not interact. It's just for the public to be heard by the board.
Okay.
You could also do it on a board night.
Yes.
Do your regular, regular public hearing, public comment, and then hold a public hearing that same night. We just moved the location.
If, if, if we're pushing to do that, there's no need to have two separate meetings. So just have the public comment or public hearing on the next October board meeting night, and, I mean.
Do we have a lot on the agenda?
It depends on what the purpose of the hearing is. Is it to give the public a chance to vent their frustration, or just they're asking questions, but they get no comment back? Uh, or is it for us to hear them so that we can make adjustments as being their representatives? You know, so, the timing of it.
Also depending, depending on how many people decide to show up, we're either gonna have, we're not gonna have enough room, depending on it.
Can we have a public ten?
We're not having here, we're moving it.
We would move the meeting to the half, I think, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'd like to be a very, very long meeting if we're doing a board meeting and then that.
I, I mean, it's okay, I mean, there, there's no need to have two separate meetings. If we're pushing this out to November, we have one person here for public comment tonight. That's, it took five or forty minutes, so you're, great, come, we want to hear.
Well, we have others, a lot of other things on our agenda.
We don't have to, I mean, we, we can set the agenda. So.
So that's what you want to plan on?
Well, I, I'm, I'm waiting to hear if that's what.
So if I want to make a motion, it would be a motion to suspend the rules to allow a vote on the forest redistricting. Allow consensus, to allow consensus?
No, you don't, you don't need vote, yeah, to allow a vote to.
On the forest redistricting presented on May.
And I would even be more specific, sir, if you could, as far as, because you're not doing a vote on, yes, we're approving it. My understanding from what the executive presented is a vote on proceed with changes. As presented.
Based on feedback.
Yes, uh, that, this is the only thing with suspending the rules motion, has to be so very specific. So which, whichever way you're leaning towards, Mr. Daniels, however you want to make that motion, just as specific as possible. And then again, another motion has to be made to actually approve. See what I'm saying, it's gotta be two motions to get this one thing done.
Well, it's to suspend the rules, yeah, then there is the motion.
Correct.
And then we have to, and then we have to unsuspend the rules.
You don't have to unsuspend the rules, that's why you need the specificity in that motion, then, because that covers you.
All right, I'm gonna try it.
Before you try it, oh, do we also want to include in the policy change of a new?
No, that's lazy.
We're gonna vote on that tonight, that's yes. Okay, here we go. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to proceed with possible feedback on the forest redistricting presented on May eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Have a motion by Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Dr. Huback, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Johnson, if you will?
Ms. Pedrosian? Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. M. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. S. Hill?
No.
Dr. Huback?
Aye.
Mrs. Purvis?
Aye.
The I's have it, sir.
So we had a motion that was approved to suspend the rules to be able to move forward with the redistricting as presented on May eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
It's gonna be the same thing, Ms. Johnson.
No, yeah, yeah, so what we just did was suspend the rules to be able to now make a motion to move forward with redistricting as presented, with the potential to make possible changes based on the public feedback or public hearing that we're going to conduct at the next school board meeting on October?
Ninth.
Ninth.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and, and so what this allows is, this allows our team to start communicating with impacted families to say, we're having a hearing at this meeting on October ninth. It allows us to start getting emails, which we probably already started getting, which is great. And then we, it, the plan that was presented on May eighth is our starting. It, it's, it, here's what the board, here's what the executive team would like to move forward with. This is the information they've given us. We, as the board, can make tweaks and changes, and that's what we're, we're saying going forward.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, we approve the, the plan for forest redistricting with potential changes, given, uh, feedback from, from the public.
At the October ninth?
At the October ninth meeting.
Ms. Johnson, is that clear?
That is, that is good.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ms. Johnson, if you will?
Ms. Pedrosian?
Yes.
I'm sorry, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. M. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. S. Hill?
No.
Dr. Huback?
Yes.
Purvis?
Yes.
The I's have it again, Mr. Chairman.
You know, before I move on, I, I just want to thank the executive team. I know you guys have heard this subject, and you've worked long hours on it. And I know there will be some changes, um, just based on public hearing, but I think it's the right thing for our county and for our district. So you hopefully have what you need now to start that and start moving forward. And then we have our public comment on Thursday, October ninth. And we will make motions to then have something to deliver and approve at our November meeting. All right. Let's see, Strategic Framework three dot O two. Mr. Dupire?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a brief summary of this, so we're not here all night long. But in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the, um, the school board passed or approved, uh, the Strategic Framework. That information was brought forth by stakeholders, division teams, and created, and they created and wrote strategies and baseline data and all that good stuff. So, um, what we're gonna attempt to do here tonight is to make a change on goal four, and we're gonna add a fifth goal, and I'll explain to you why. So if we go to the second slide, you'll see the four goals listed at the bottom. You'll see the vision, building, citizens promoting success, and the mission. But goal number one is high expectations, um, which is based on academic, uh, expectations and support for all our students to attain those, those, uh, obtain those expectations. Number two is safe and supportive learning environment, and that really talks about the safety of the campus that gives the kids not only the comfort of being physically and emotionally safe, but it also collaborates with things like the sheriff's department and those types of things that give us a safe campus. The third is a high-quality workforce, and that is hiring, uh, good teachers and also retaining good teachers. And so there's some discussions that need to go on. I know we talked about it tonight, but there are discussions that need to go on with the board supervisors about how important it is that we get our, uh, teachers up to grade. Also, it, it goes into professional development and a lot of different things that train our teachers, and I think Dr. Trossper's talked a lot about that tonight, how do we get our kids to move to that next level? And the fourth goal, which we, um, which is mutually supportive of partners, that's okay. Um, again, I'm gonna breeze through this. Uh, we're changing that in the future to family and community partnerships, and we're changing the wording of that to include, uh, the student well-being. And the reason that I think that this has come about is because of the conversations I've had on, in fifty-three swats. I mentioned it last year, I had to slow down a little bit because of, we were getting ahead of, of the county on mental health, um, and that is huge, and, and, um, Mr. Tucker's done a valuable job of preparing teachers and eventually, well, administrators and teachers on what we're looking for. How do you identify a mental health issue? There's a lot still to be done there, and so, but I commend him for, I, I watched the, the, the presentation in the summer with principals, was just outstanding. And, and so that's kind of the refocus of that, is after listening to all of the people and all of the counselors. We do have a mental health crisis with our kids in certain areas. It's bigger in some areas than others, but we need to make that as part of our goal. So you'll see the changes there, family and community partnership, um, is the new title there, and student well-being is one of the new phrases. So when you go to the next slide, the fifth goal that we're adding in really talks about resources, effective in, use of resources, efficient. And we had no place in the original first four goals to identify those four things, uh, on the annual, you know, the significance of the annual budget and, and this, in, in collaborating with the strategic plan, creating and maintaining a long-term capital improvement plan. And number three, um, exploring cost-saving opportunities. And number four, advocating with state and local representatives to fully, uh, fund the mandates they're giving to us. So you're gonna, you're going, this is more informational tonight. You're going to, at some point in time, uh, come back and vote on the, these changes. And so we just, we wanted to be prepared and, and explain to you the differences, why those differences occurring. And, and then lastly, I would say, because we promised you this last year, but here we are revamping it. I believe, I, I made a crass comment, you know, if we don't do anything, if we just put her on the board and we don't do anything with it, it's not that valuable, and, and so it's not. And so what we're committed to doing is making it a live, a living, breathing document. And, and so, um, this is the reason for the changes. And, um, we will come back monthly to this board and give you updates or give you pieces of it. Like, we'll spend one month on goal one and some of the strategies there, another month, goal two, and some of the strategies there, so that you actually understand what it is. And if any of you need the document, I know I made it, uh, I, I gave it to Mrs. Purvis at one point. If you need the document, once we get these changes done, that you can take home and read, it will explain all of the intricacies of what is underneath that small print there that you really can't see. But you can see it on your screen. Um, so that's our goal, is to make this a breathing document, a, a living document.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Good.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we are asking for action on the goals because that is approved, not tonight.
Yes, we'll come back.
But it, at next month, so that we can add that, make that change.
Okay, and that's why I'd say, if any of you want the document, I think, do we have it electronically for them?
It is on board docs.
It's on board docs, so you could look at it. I know those revisions are being made, but you could look at it.
And we won't make a lot of revisions to goal five until we know that you're okay with approving it.
Correct.
So there's not an in-depth document for that one yet, sorry.
I think, no, that's okay. I think you'll be excited once we start breaking this down as to how it applies to the progression, academic progression of our kids, and the safety of our kids, and the keeping and retaining good staff. I, I'm just, I, I would go from school to school, and even today at Bedford Elementary, his grandparents stayed there for one grade. And to hear the grandparents speak about their child's or grandchild's teacher, uh, in the cafeteria today is a, it's a blessing. We have a lot of good teachers, and we need to make sure that we support them as they move these kids.
So when you say it's a living, breathing document, does that mean that you're gonna be putting together some kind of rubric to see if you're achieving these goals, or what are you still thinking?
When you do a school improvement plan, you put, you put, um, your strategies, put action plans of dates on them usually. And so you'll want to see things being accomplished.
So you'll have?
And they'll be noted as, you know, now. I mean, that's still to be tweaked as we go through this.
So you'll have goal, more, more specific goals, and then see for each school, or for what are you thinking, how this?
Uh, it's generally for the whole population of schools. But it could be enforced differently at different levels. I think the key right now, like the copy I gave you, those four pages, if you just understand those four pages, you'll see the, the strategies and you'll see some of the actions. We gotta make them real. It's not to say that we haven't, but you have to put dates on them at some point.
Any other questions? Three dot O three, twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar, Dr. Woodford?
Um, so you'll see loaded on board docs is a draft calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. For those of you who've been on the board, you know, uh, the, before we did last year's calendar, or I guess this year's calendar, we had a calendar committee who got input from schools, and we really, um, made some, I think, significant changes and improvements to the calendar. And we went, um, with that flexibility from the state to do nine hundred and ninety instructional hours versus a hundred and eighty days. Um, this calendar is built just like this year's calendar. Um, workdays for teachers at the end of every nine weeks to do grades and to, um, get those report cards ready. Also embedded professional development days. Um, we also have a conference day, um, our Thanksgiving holiday, the two weeks at Christmas. And I think the biggest is that, um, professional development day, the day after the Super Bowl in February. I can't believe I was actually looking at the Super Bowl for twenty twenty-seven. But we also have honored the two virtual workdays that the board has asked us to give teachers. You'll notice that we're, we're starting later next year. That's because Memorial Day falls at the end of the month. So Memorial Day is on May the thirty-first, so graduation is on May the twenty-ninth. The last couple of years, we've felt like we've started back so early in August, that's because Memorial Day's been pushed up. So people will be excited, I think, to know we're gonna start August nineteenth with the first day of school, um, which is again a Wednesday start, which I heard a lot of positives about. They got the kids in, got things settled, we got, and then we had the weekend to readjust and get ourselves back together. Um, so I'm just giving you this for information, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, and just asking for a vote next month.
I have one question.
Sure.
And this is very much a recency bias thing.
Okay.
Um, open house, it's three to seven, I, I know it used to be longer. Was there a rationale for that, and then?
Honestly, it, the rationale was so that teachers from twelve to three could go see their children's teachers instead of leaving when parents were coming. Honestly, it, for me, it could go either way. I, um, if the board would rather, we could do a time where teachers go see their kids' teachers the day before, or we just do what we did in years past and just allow them to leave, and then parents come, and sometimes they know, like, there might be a sign on the door. So I, I think, uh, some people liked it a lot, some people, um, felt like the parents were rushed through, so I, I'm flexible.
I know if you've got different, at different schools, four hours is a stretch. I know if you've got different, at different schools, four hours is a stretch.
Yes.
I mean, I've got just my two at one school, and you can obviously take that long, but I would imagine, I got some of the feedback of, hey, I've got some of the elementary schools and the middle school, it's hard to...
Hard to get everywhere. Yeah. I, I would not, I, I'm happy to change it back to twelve to seven, and then we just allow teachers to go when they can, and that's, that's fine.
I don't have a strong opinion on that, I just wanted to know the answer.
No, I think it's good feedback. I think we heard some of that too, where people were kind of a little uncertain, and then, yeah, so.
Your negative feedback will be, I, I went to the classroom and the teacher wasn't there because the teacher jumped over to primary to see their child, and then jumped back to, you know, Bedford Elementary. So that's the negative of it.
Would everybody like for me to make that change to twelve to seven? I think it's a small change. I do think it, it helps parents out.
You know, if you were to change it back to twelve to seven for open house for that teacher workday, could we be flexible on the third, or a different day before school starts, maybe the eighteenth, that allows teachers to then take their kids to meet their teachers the next day?
Or could we split it to where maybe we don't do twelve to seven, we do two to seven, or one thirty, you know, still allowing that time, it's just shorting that time just a little bit.
What I don't want to do is take away from our teachers who are parents.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, they should have an opportunity to be able to go and meet their teachers, but we also want our teachers to be in the classroom when their students are coming as well, so.
I, I kind of like the twelve to two, or either eleven to two for teachers maybe, and then the two to seven for parents, given five hours, would that be a...
That works.
That way, that, you know, when the teachers do the class, like, you've got your classroom ready, you're kind of ready for the day to meet kids and stuff, it's hard to do another day too, so I like the, maybe just giving a little bit more time on the parents.
I think especially if we can push it back to eleven for the, you know, coming of that.
I'll work on that and put a new draft up.
Any other questions on the school calendar?
All right.
Three dot oh four, twenty-six, twenty-seven board budget calendar, Mr. Hagler.
Yes, in front of you is a recommended calendar for adopting the budget for next year. The finance committee, budget and finance committee reviewed this with staff. It is going to be a longer session next year because with the election coming in, and this will be a brand-new biannual budget, so for, they're going to be setting the budget for the next two years after this. They usually are in session a little bit longer. So I probably will not have very good data. The data I'll start with is with the outgoing governor, and then there could be a lot of changes depending on the election and what that budget could look at at the state. The state is the biggest driving factor of our budget, we get most of our money from there. So the recommendation is in front of you. We'll bring this back at the next meeting for discussion or for vote. We have public comment in there, and we're looking at probably late February superintendent's proposal, and then coming back the following week for the board to have one week to look at it and then adopt a preliminary budget to send over to the county in early March. I've already talked to the staff at the county, thinks that this, this calendar works for them too.
Any questions? All right.
Just started the year, and we're working on the budget for next year.
Good. Sir. Three dot oh six, policy updates, Mr. DePere.
I think we skipped a calendar there.
Board meeting calendar, my apologies. Mr. DePere.
You have before you a school board calendar. You'll notice location is all at the school administration office in here. The reason for that is because Susie G. is being used by both Liberty and Stanton River for their theater productions and any other productions that they have, so we don't have the ability, well, we would, but we'd have to literally have them not be set up in those months, those quarterly months. So we've elected to go back to this for, for the one year and do presentations for recognition. So any other questions?
Policy updates, Mr. DePere.
There are about seven policy for information. On August twenty-sixth, the IGA met and reviewed the following proposals. DJ Small Purchasing Policy Updated to Reflect Amendment to State Law Regarding that Small Purchase Amounts Not Requiring Competitive Sealed Bids or Competitive Negotiation. Number two, GCL Professional Staff Development Policy Updated to Reflect Amendment to State Law to specific, or to specify the type of professional development we provide in implementing the Virginia IEP, Removal of an Outdated Deadline Provision, Expectations of Non-Academic Training Activities for Teachers, and Changes to wording to maintain consistency with all other policies. The third, Policy IA Instructional Goals and Objectives Policy Updated to Reflect Amendment to State Law Complying with Virginia Literacy Act and Incorporate the Passport Program and College and Career Planning. Number four, IGAD Career and Technical Education Policy Update to Reflect Amendment to State Law to Include Details Regarding Top Professions in Virginia as Part of Each Student's Academic and Career Plan and the Specifications of Industry Recognized Credentials That Are Accepted as Substitutes for Certain Credits Required for High School Graduation, Consistent with the List Developed and Maintained by the Virginia Board of Education as Part of College and Career Access Pathways and Partnerships. Number five is a combination IGAE and IGAF Health Education, Physical Education Policy Update to Reflect Amendment of State Law Requiring VCPS to Provide Students with Health and Instruction and Physical Training as Prescribed by the Virginia Board of Education and Approved by the Virginia Board of Health. Health Instructions Cover Comprehensive Health, Including Mental Well-Being, Stress Management, and the Importance of Seeking Help. It May Also Include Prescription Drug Safety and Menstrual Education. Additionally, JROTC Participate Participants, They Fulfill Nine to Twelve Physical Education Requirements and VCPS Offers In-Person and Virtual Hazing Prevention Instruction for Ninth and Tenth Graders. Lastly, the policy edits include language to convey that recess for K to Five Students Cannot be Time on Chromebooks or Devices, but Rather Physical Activity. Number six is, excuse me, IGBA Programs for Students with Disabilities Policy Updated to Reflect Amendment to State Law That the School Board Designates a Facility Member to Serve as a Special Education Parent-Child Liaison, Who Serves as a Resource to Parents and Guardians and Families, Rewords Information About Diplomas for Students with Disabilities to Be Clearer, and Changes to wording to Maintain Consistency with All Other Policies. And the last, JFCG Cell Phones and or Personal Electronic Communication Devices Policies, or Policy, oh, thank you, Policy Updated to Reflect Amendment to State Law Regarding Specific Incidences When Cell Phones and or Personal Electronic Devices, Communication Devices Can Be Used on School Property. Who is Responsible for Implementation and Reinforcement and Disciplinary Actions Related to This Policy?
All right. Any questions on those policies? And again, that's informational, and we'll take action on those next month. Action items, six dot oh one, RFP for Stanton River High School and Liberty High School HVAC bid, Mr. Hagler.
Yes, on our CIP plan, scheduled for next year, to begin next year, will probably take two summers to get this done, talk to the facility committee. We had a study done on both of those schools, I heard profit, looking at what we need to do for those HVACs. It is a complicated changeover, affecting multiple buildings underneath the roof, getting to HVAC units and the controls. They have that study done, it is included in the RFP, we're requesting the board to issue this RFP tomorrow and bring it back to the facility committee and the full board for approval later, I think into the December meeting, I believe. So this would be put out and advertised on the state web, state website, on our website, and also on, we put it out on Facebook and notify people that this is out there.
To have a motion to present the RFP for Stanton River High School and Liberty High School HVAC bid.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. S. Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Hagler, you have your approval. Six dot oh two, approval of policy JCD, Mr. DePere.
This policy is up for info and action tonight. The IGA committee met on August twenty-sixth to review proposed revisions to the following policy. JCD Schools Zone Transfer Proposed Edits Include the Addition of Language to Require the Superintendent or the Superintendent's Designee to Develop and Implement Administrative Procedures to Guide the Redistricting Process for School Board Review and Approval.
All right. Have, do I have a motion for the approval of policy JCD as presented last month?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. S. Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Any opposed? Policy JCD is approved. Six dot oh three, approval of Family Life Curriculum, Dr. Trossper.
Yes, I presented information last week. The only, there's one change that was sent in a board memo on August twenty-seventh, based on feedback from the CPO committee. We just added some information about potential risk associated with pornography use, and also there, we emphasized, there was some information, taught to students about sexting, and so, we, Freedom 424, communication with them, they, they will make sure in their training they'll emphasize those, so, again, the summary's in a board memo of those changes, but other than that, it's the same, it's what I presented.
Do I have a motion to approve Family Life Curriculum as presented with the changes that Dr. Woodford just discussed?
So moved.
All right. Dr. Hubach, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Purvis, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Any opposed? Six dot oh three is approved. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia two dot two dash thirty-seven, eleven A, one, two, three, seven for one, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Employees of Bedford County Public Schools. Two for the Discussion or Consideration of Mission or Disciplinary Matters, or any other that would involve the Disclosure of Information, Continued Scholastic Records Concerning Any Student of Any Public Institution or Higher Education in the Commonwealth, or any, any state school system, being students number zero-nine-one-one-two-five-A and number zero-nine-one-one-two-five-B. Three for the Discussion of the Acquisition of Real Estate, Real Property for Public Purpose, or the Disposition of Publicly Held Real Property, where Discussion in an Open Meeting would Adversely Effect the Bargaining Position or Negotiating Strategy of the Public Body. Seven for the, for Consultation with Legal Counsel and Briefings by Staff Members or Consultants pertaining to Actual or Probable Litigation, where Such Consultation or Briefing in an Open Meeting would Adversely Effect the Negotiation or Litigating Posture of the Public Body.
Did you want to repeat? The mic not on. So I have a motion by Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Mr. S. Hill? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. A lot more.
You guys have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. A lot more.
I have a motion about a closed session.
So move.
I have a motion by Dr. Kubak. Do you have a second?
Aye.
I have a second by Mr. S. Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are out of closed session. If you will, please certify the closed meeting, Ms. Johnson.
Where the Bedford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act where Section 2.2 Where the Bedford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act where Section 2.2-3712D if the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting is conducted and conformed with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bedford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were hurried discussed or considered.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Do I have a motion or action on closed meeting?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we uphold the recommendation for student 091125A.
You can do them together or separately, it's up to you.
And also that we uphold the recommendation for student 091125B.
So I have a motion, Mr. Daniels, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. S. Hill, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh.
Aah.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. S. Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daniels, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh.
Aah.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Matters from the board, committee reports, we will start.
No.
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Yeah, we've not met this month, like we're gonna meet next month, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Ms. Purvis?
The Governor's School, we are still working on getting a new, I guess I call it a director for the Gov. School. We had some discussion back and forth about whether the board does it or the supervisors or superintendents do it. And so we decided to put together a hiring committee with two board members and three superintendents or their representatives. And so they are working on that right now, the applications are at Lynchburg City HR. They are going to use a rubric, decide and show us all of the information on that as well as not just the committee but also the board members and the other supervise or superintendents. So that it's very transparent and then we'll be choosing from there or the hiring committee will be choosing from there, so that's our status there.
The board makes the final.
The board, they will, the hiring committee will bring a recommendation to the final recommendation to the board and then the board makes the final decision.
Okay.
Then with the STEM Academy, we went over our strategic plan and there was a part of it that still had a lot of DEI stuff in it. And I brought up the point that we could get sued for that. So we are in discussions on trying to work out how to go forward and remove the DEI requirements for the STEM Academy. I was assured very strongly that we are doing it based on merit but that that DEI part of it is still in our strategic plan so they're gonna be discussing how to remove that and what to do with that. And CPO, we have, we haven't met, so.
Yeah, CPO met and we got an update from Ms. Jennings on the Special Education Indicator Report that is an annual event. There were no real surprises there and some of the preliminary data that you all heard earlier this evening. I think the most exciting thing that we were doing is talking about strategic planning as to how to incorporate education of the parents of our students as to some of the evils of cell phones for our kids and the ramping ADHD diagnoses and how those things are linked. And really just educating the parents how to be more involved and proactive with their kids because I think we're gonna see more results from our SOLs from that than we do from any of the other minor tweaks that we do in the classroom. But, so that was exciting. And then IGA met and we went over what we were introduced to tonight.
We meet again, was it September?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-second. Monday, yep, Monday.
Any updates on yours? I am going to give a shout out for CEAC. They are looking for members and participants for all districts but really pushing for representation in the Forest and Stanton River area. We have a good number participating from the Liberty Zone but really want to encourage parents who want information and need more information to get involved with that CEAC board. Special Education Advisory Council, just in case anybody was wondering what that stood for. There are lots of activities that they do throughout the year. They're, you know, wanting to make sure they can share information, look on their Facebook page. We do try to utilize the Bedford County site, Bedford County Public School site to advertise information about CEAC. We do meet and those meetings are advertised on our site of when we meet, we meet right here in this room, so make sure you're looking at that. But want to encourage parents to get involved, you know, we hear special request or we hear things about IEPs and information. That's where you're gonna learn what's offered to you and what can and can't be done. I mean, so there's additional information for that CEAC, so definitely get involved with that. Finance Committee meeting is meeting again in October, we did not meet in September but we will meet in October and we'll have more updates by our October school board meeting for that. All right, comments and concerns from school board members, Dr. Kubak, we'll start with you.
I was able to participate this morning with, for Patriots Day at Montville Elementary School and it was great to see all the kids out there. Are interested in being Patriots, that is their mascot name and they were given a lot of education about nine eleven and the historic events that happened and how normal people rose to the occasion to support their communities and to be active citizens and patriots of this country. And that was apropos in light of the assassination of Charlie Kirk last night who regardless of how you feel about his personal beliefs was a great patriot who stood for the Constitution and the rights that that gives us as Americans. And he espoused the will to make a difference and to become involved and be a citizen. And Charlie knew the risks of the message that he brought and he knew that his life was on the line. And reminded me of the words of Jim Elliott who was martyred in nineteen fifty-six when he said he is no fool who gives up what he cannot keep to gain what he can never lose. And God bless Charlie Kirk's family, our thoughts and prayers go out to him, mine do, and he will be greatly missed.
Ms. Purvis?
I wanted to say something about Charlie too because from a spiritual standpoint, he, I feel like was more than just an assassination, political assassination, he was a Christian martyr. He shared the love of Jesus, he shared the gospel, many people came to know the Lord because of him. And he used reason, he used, and he was always kind to people. Even those who were very ugly to him, he was always kind and he's a good example of what it means to be a Christian. So I was very, very upset to see him gone but I just wanna challenge more and more people to be like him because we need more people like him in this world.
Yeah, just wanna echo what board members have shared about Charlie, I think that that's, it's definitely affected me. I think that, you know, we get up here and we're in the public as well and we know a lot of people that are and wanna stand for your beliefs. And if people have disagreements, that's okay to have disagreements, that's how sometimes you get to better answers but you do things respectfully and you do things civilly. And this is never the way that it's supposed to be. He was getting young people involved in politics and if you don't, if you wanna change the direction of the country, we live in a country where you can do that but you have to be involved in the process. And he encouraged people no matter what to be involved in the process. So I certainly hope that continues, you know, prayers are with his family, his young family, his kids and his wife. And I'm just, you know, I'm sure that we're all gonna be lifting them up in our prayers. On September eleventh, two thousand one, I was living in New Jersey at the time and where I lived in New Jersey was very close to, there was a lot of people would go to the city. We never called it New York City, just says the going to the city. And where I worked, the store that I worked at, there was a bus depot nearby and it would take people to and from the city. And, you know, over the next couple of days, it was very strange for me to look up in the sky and I live in the tri-state area and not see any planes flying around. It was eerie, it was eerie how quiet it was. And a lot of those cars sat in that lot and days and weeks would, days would go by and nobody was there for those cars. I had a cousin who was working at the World Trade Center, was able to get, was able to survive and get home but has never gone back to the city since. It was scary, a guy I worked with, his dad was one of the last firefighters out. And this is at a time cell phones didn't really work and he was working with me and I sent him home, I said, just go be with your mom. His dad was able to get out, we didn't find that out till later. But it really was hitting close to home for a lot of us there as it did for everybody. But there was, and it's so crazy to see how divided that we can be where people can do the things what happened to Charlie. But for that moment on nine eleven, two thousand one, we were united. It was a short period, you didn't know how long it was gonna last but it does show that as Americans we can come together. And I think that was the thing that kinda, that came out of it for a while. And it's a shame that it takes some sort of tragedy for us to kinda realize that. But I would ask that it be on us to try to live that every day and show what this country can be. I mean, we're working every day to try to make these schools better here in our little community in Bedford County, Virginia. And that little difference that we're trying to make makes a big difference. So I think that we have that responsibility and we need to take it seriously, that's all I got.
Mr. Hill? I have no additional comment.
Just thank you for sharing what you well said about Charlie Kirk. I know millions are devastated and so what you said in nine eleven, yeah, must never forget. So it's important to keep sharing and bring it up and encourage.
I also echo everything that you guys said on two topics of Charlie and then also nine eleven. There are a couple of things, I did, with Dr. Kubak, attend Montville Elementary this morning and it was a special time. And it was good to see that lesson while we were remembering nine eleven but also talking about Patriots. But also showing that we're teaching about patriotism at our elementary school, so it was good to see it firsthand and live. I also made a comment to the staff this morning that I used to think that Liberty Middle School had the best view but I'm not so sure that Montville may not be in the running for that. So beautiful campus and the view, which this morning was just amazing, so. Couple of things, you know, I wanna make sure I bring it up, I've had side conversations but I think it's important to address. I know there were some social media, some slash comments made from some of our teachers this week. And I don't wanna make light of it but I want them to understand, I saw it, I understand, I'm concerned. But I wanna make sure that we as a team and our staff, you've got your eye on teacher morale, which I know you do. But again, I just wanna call it out because it's important to understand what they're going through. They have a tough job, you know, I know that we as a team have state requirements that we have to make sure we're doing and we have to communicate. And so I wanna make sure we're doing a really good job when we're delivering to our teachers, here's why we're doing this or here's why this is coming down. And, you know, we talked about it tonight about, you know, classroom sizes and the implementations. I mean, I just wanna make sure we're supporting and I know this board supports and we're behind supporting our staff. And I just wanna make sure we're addressing because a lot of the teachers that I saw, they're seasoned teachers and they care. And I'm not saying there's a teacher that doesn't care but what I mean is when you see a seasoned teacher who has been around for a long time and they're using terms like, I just don't know that this is my profession anymore. Or I just don't know that this is what I wanna be or what I wanna do or that I wanna encourage younger people to do this. I know that's burnout but I know they care enough because I learned a long time ago, those who say something are the ones who care. And so I don't want to ignore them and I know you guys are already aware, I've talked to you about it, made my concerns. But I know a lot of those teachers watch and so we hear you, we see you, you know, keep talking, keep sharing. And, you know, I get it, chain of command, I heard you loud and clear. But I wanna make sure that, you know, we're maintaining and keeping our teachers because that's important. So I didn't wanna not mention that or say something. The other thing that I wanna bring up is the concern about the policy from the coach at Liberty Middle School. I would like to ask that the IGA team take a look at our current policy. And I know there were some dates given out tonight of we need to implement. It's about urgency. Urgency. Yeah. So I just wanna make sure the IGA is looking at that. I didn't want the coach or the parent or parents who may have been listening to that to think that we didn't hear it or that we were ignoring it. And so I would like IGA to take some urgency on that and take a look to see what we can do. That's all I had, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Daniels, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Purvis, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying ahh.
Aah.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.